The city has made by investing in such a landmark. The pride and vitality it sparked for downtown was remarkable, and I believe we can achieve even more here in Bonita Springs. Equally important is creating opportunities for ongoing cultural experiences. By working in partnership with local artists and nonprofits like Arts Bonita, we can bring even more people downtown again and again through signature events. Rooftop and Riverside and Shugashack are doing an outstanding job. But just imagine monthly art and music works, walks that energize the streets, feel local businesses, and give our artists and musicians a platform to share their talents. By supporting our local talent, we'll create an authentic and genuine cultural landscape. These recurring events would build momentum and create a rhythm of community life that enhances both economic vitality and quality of life. On a personal note, I moved to Bonita Springs because of the arts. In just two years, Arts Bonita has experienced enormous growth. Performance income has doubled, our educational programs are increasing quarterly year over year. Our fine art festivals bring thousands of people from around the region and hundreds of spectacular artists from around the country and the world. These numbers demonstrate the great appetite our residents and visitors have for the arts and culture, and the incredible opportunity before us to embed the arts into our city's future. I urge the council to make the arts an integral part of our comprehensive downtown plan and not an afterthought, but a guiding principle. Let's invest in partnership, in infrastructure, and in the vision that celebrates creativity. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-zoning agenda items? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to ceremonial presentations and proclamations. Commander Blake Lee.
Under your command, our city has grown safer and more secure, which is a reflection of your leadership style that prioritized building trust and strengthening bonds between law enforcement and residents. In times of crisis, from hurricane winds to rising floodwaters, your steadfast leadership brought calm and order and helped our city to emerge with greater resilience and unity. Whether responding to emergencies or leading routine operations, you consistently embodied the values that we hold dear in Bonita Springs. We've helped write, you've helped write the story of who we are as a community, and your legacy of excellence will continue to shape the heart and soul of the community policing unit for years to come. May this next chapter of your life bring you, Lori, and your entire family peace and security that you have so generously given to others throughout your years of service. Presented this day October 1st, 2025, by the City Council of the Bonita Springs. Signed, Mike Gibson, Mayor.
All right, so I'd actually asked the mayor not to give me the microphone. I always have a lot to say, but I didn't have too much, or, well, the feelings of today and what this signifies is dramatic, but either way, the words, Mayor, and council are very, very kind. And you all know, I appreciate each and every one of you. We've had a wonderful, very constructive relationship, and again, the words that you just mentioned are very, very true. So I wish to thank all of you for this wonderful opportunity. I wish to thank Sheriff Marcino for pretty much an opportunity of a lifetime. It's been 33 years, it's been amazing. I wish to thank those that I'm here for each and every day, which is each and every one of our deputies. In the back of the room, you can see a significant amount, you'll be seeing them up front here in just one minute. But, you know, all that I do and what I try to focus on each and every day is to do the very best that I can for our community, making sure that, you know, everybody can go to bed, you know, each and every night, feeling safe and not having to worry about it. And it's not what I do, it's actually what our men and women do in the back. We have Chief Reeves, we have Colonel Cassell that are here today, they are, you know, they're part of the executive command, longtime friends, longtime supervisors, these are the men that facilitate everything that we do on a daily basis, and they continue to do an exceptional, exceptional job. And of course, there's so many other people that are here that I'm not recognizing, but you know who you are, you know, and I appreciate everything you do. Most importantly, at the end of the day, my beautiful wife Lori, my beautiful son Blaze and Bryce. If it wasn't for them, their support each and every day in supporting me in what I do, the demand of the job, and the love that they've given me each and every day, this would have never been possible. So I wish to recognize them, and of course, the community of not only Bonita Springs, but of Lee County, everybody's been phenomenal. The support that we as law enforcement receive in southwest Florida is tremendous, and we do the very, very best that we can each and every day to show you our appreciation, but the also sure that you are.
Remix.
Hello? All right, so either way, back to the community, we appreciate you all each and every day, and we thank you for your continued support. And lastly, is recognizing God for, you know, all that He has done, all the blessings that He's given me in my life, my family, and keeping each and every one of us safe each and every day. So again, thank you all very much, and God bless.
This morning, we're also celebrating the 20 years of service for our city manager, Arlene Hunter. Yeah, I want to present this to you. I mean, I know everybody. I know everybody knows Arlene, her dedication, 20 years with the city now, and she's kind of the matriarch of this family of the city here. She's the glue that holds everybody together. Whenever there's an issue, she's always looking for good ways to resolve it, you know, bridge gaps. She's just an amazing city manager, and I can't imagine, you know, being mayor at the city without her. So, you know, we appreciate everything you do, and thank you so much.
Try to do this quickly, but, so just as a reminder, I was 12 when I started, if you're trying to do the math. But if you told me where I would be two decades ago from right now, I would have said, that's not, that's not, oh, see, there you go, there's the lights. It's been a journey, and Mohammed said that the best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in service. And so that's what I live for every day, is service to my family, to my husband back there, to my kids, to the community that I live in, that I love so much, that's a part of my fabric now, and the service to these amazing people who have given me a wonderful opportunity and believed in me, and have let me start it as a special events and park coordinator. And as Gary used to say, a joke from a commercial is, "Give it to Mikey, she'll try it." So as we learned and we grew together as a city, give it to Arlene and she'll try it. So grants and parks and, and then, and then we made our way into storms, so we're learning everything we can about emergency management as we go along the way. So I just can't imagine being anywhere else in another city and without the support and leadership that has brought me here. So thank you, Mike, I couldn't be here without you all as well. So, and the amazing staff we have, who are the real heroes every day. So thank you.
Motion to adjourn? All right, moving on to number seven, public hearings.
Item 78 is the first reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, rezoning approximately 10 plus or minus acres from the commercial plan development CPD zoning designation to a commercial plan development CPD zoning designation to develop up to six buildings with a maximum of 39,500 square feet of commercial uses, 80,000 square feet of self-storage slash mini warehouse uses, and 70,000 square feet of light industrial uses. Located at 25211 Old 41 Road, strap number 22-47-25-B1-00002.4010, Bonita Springs, Florida 34135, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, this item is quasi-judicial, even though it doesn't require any action today, I'm sure the applicant and the staff would like the testimony today to be incorporated in the record, so I'd ask anyone who intends to speak on this side, please stand and be sworn in. Is your right hand, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you.
Good morning, Council, Mary Tonberg, Community Development. Just a brief introduction, you've heard what the case is, that it's a rezon to a commercial plan development within the general commercial future land use. This is one of those properties that is not in an overlay, but we do have plan development criteria that are analyzed within the staff report. Staff does recommend approval subject to conditions. Zoning Board recommended approval as well, and some direction to staff and the applicant to work on some of the schedule of uses, which we have. Those are outlined in the revised conditions provided to you today. The applicant and staff do agree on those. The applicant will go ahead and present to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Francesca Pasidomo for the record. Members of City Council, Mayor Gibson, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, FREP Old 41 Development LP, in this petition to rezone a parcel from its existing commercial plan development to a new commercial plan development for the purpose of modifying the master plan, reducing commercial square footage, eliminating outdoor storage uses, and adding indoor self-storage and light industrial uses to appropriately integrate infill development that leverages context and sensitive design and uses. We are prepared to present a detailed presentation, and our experts are here to answer, excuse me, any subject matter questions that you may have. In terms of the sequence of the presentation, Connor McBroom, who represents the petitioner, is a principal who resides in Collier County, will explain the sterling reputation of his development and the roots that are established in south Florida. Patty Kulak with RVI will walk you through the nature of the request and the carefully planned master concept plan. Then Mr. Deirdrecks, our architect, will present to you concept renderings to give you a flavor of the design. Mr. Deirdrecks will be followed by Christian Casey, who will briefly explain that there are no environmental impacts or sensitive environmental issues. Sabrina McBride, McCabe, excuse me, I apologize, Sabrina, will describe to you, she's our landscape architect, she will describe to you how lighting will cut off at the property line as required by your code, and how buffers have been significantly enhanced as this request has moved forward in relation to the master concept plan that was previously approved. And Sabrina will be followed by Brandon Copper, our civil engineer, who will explain to you that the current property has no drainage system whatsoever, and we will be implementing the best in terms of what the city expects and what the water management district expects. Finally, Brandon will be followed by TR Transportation, who will explain to you a significant reduction in trims relative to the existing zoning. This again is a summary of our request that was read into the record. In terms of location, before I turn it over to Ms. Kulak, I just wanted to orient you. This is on Old 41 significantly north of your overlay, as Ms. Zizzo noted to you. To the north is industrial uses, to the west is Old 41 and industrial and commercial uses, to the south is a retention area, and further south of that, residential, and to the east is a designated preserve. With that, I'll turn it over to Connor to just explain briefly, FREP as the developer.
You have a question for you?
This is first reading, I motion we move to second reading.
No, we do the entire presentation at first readings now.
Oh, we've changed?
Yeah.
When were you going to tell us?
Well, that's how we've been doing it, and we don't do motions anymore, it just automatically goes to second.
Now, now, we'll defer to whatever your direction is here, so we are prepared to present the entire presentation. However, if you would like for us to just have this petition in the record, or this presentation in the record and present to you on October 15th, we'll follow your direction. So we're prepared today, but of course, if you have, if you want to truncate our presentation, we'll honor that as well.
Yeah, we'd prefer to get it all on the record now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Good morning, Council members, Mayor Gibson. My name is Connor McBroom, I'm president of Forager Real Estate, Inc., on behalf of the petitioner, FREP Old 41 Development LP, the developer for this project. Over the years, our firm has developed and managed nearly a million square feet of commercial real estate, and although we originated in Toronto, Canada, for several years now, we've made a strong commitment with our program to investing and operating specifically here in southwest Florida to channel Ms. Hunter a little earlier. It very much feels like it's part of our fabric now with investing activities, both in Collier and Lee Counties, specifically around employment generating properties and properties that provide accommodation for typically small and medium-sized businesses. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. We understand the strategic importance of this site to the community, and since acquiring the property in July of 2024, our goal has been to bring forward a plan that's thoughtful, high-quality, and aligned with the city's long-term vision. In doing so, we've paid particular attention to the surrounding uses, including a nearby single-family residential neighborhood, to ensure the plan is respectful and harmonious with the immediate area. What you'll see today in our presentation is the product of a collaborative effort by our team of planners, architects, engineers, and attorneys, all of whom are very well-versed in our immediate community, locally based, and they're going to share how this project has been designed to balance economic vitality, functionality, and design appeal. In that same spirit, I also want to recognize the close collaboration with your city planning staff, and thank them for the countless discussions and thoughtful dialogue that have helped shape this proposal over the past year. From our perspective as the developer, our commitment is straightforward, which is to deliver a project that contributes positively to the city, respects its surroundings, and provides lasting value for the community and our future users. With that, I'll turn it over to Patty Kulak, RVI Planning, who will walk you through the planning context and how this proposal integrates with the city's broader objectives. Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Patty Kulak for the record with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture. Let's get into the project. So as a property overview, this is a 10-acre site with direct access off of Old 41 Road. It is a heavily impacted site. As you'll see from the aerial provided on your screen, that is an accurate depiction of what the site currently looks like. It is an existing landscape company that does have some storage of vehicles in the rear of the front of the building. The previous landscape company will be vacating the site should this get approved, and all existing structures with that will be removed, including the storage of the vehicles in the rear. We are within the commercial future land use category, we will be staying within that. The site is currently zoned a commercial plan development that was approved in 2004. We are making changes to that because the master concept plan that was associated with that approval has since expired. For some context about the property and its surrounding community, to the north, we have heavy industrial uses for a marine contract fabrication company. They do create seawalls on-site, and then when you go a little bit south of that, we have the Bonita Springs Moose Lodge directly north of our site, and to the south, we have the Bonita Isles single-family community. When you look at the aerial provided, the stormwater retention for the Bonita Isles community directly abuts our property. Going over to the east, we do have that Bonita Isles open preserve land along the rear of our property, and the west, we have Old 41 Road, and then a commercial retail strip across the street from there. As I mentioned, this is the exist, the master concept plan that was associated with the 2004 approval that has since expired. And what we are requesting this morning is a single entrance off of Old 41 to be maintained, six separate buildings that will include 39,500 square feet of commercial along Old 41 Road, and then when you step to the rear of that, you will have 150,000 square feet of flexible commercial, light industrial, and storage and warehouse uses. All of our buildings throughout the site will be a maximum of 30 feet, and we are including an enhanced buffer along the south property line closest to that residential community that does include a six-foot-tall fence at the request of Bonita Isles community that we spoke with them about almost a year ago at this point. On your screen now is that master concept plan. As I mentioned, you have the two buildings that front Old 41, both of those buildings will be primarily the commercial uses, and then when you step to the back, we have the building along the north property line that is building one that would encompass some of the light industrial uses. Building two behind that would also incorporate those light industrial uses, and then when we step down to buildings three and buildings four, those would be the warehouse units and the storage component, so that we're lessening the intensity while we get closer to that residential community that directly abuts to the south. We do have three deviations with that, with this request. The first deviation is to allow the separation requirement that the code has of 660 feet. Both of our accesses to the nearest drive aisles, one is 459 feet to the north and 587 feet to the south. We are maintaining the existing access to the site, so this deviation is in place currently. We're just asking for the approval of the deviation to be maintained, because we cannot move the location of our entry point to be compliant with that 660-foot requirement anywhere on the site, so why not keep it the same? Deviation number two is for our perimeter plantings. The code requires a certain amount of plantings around the buildings. While we get into the design of the site, you'll see that all of our buildings along the rear have garage door access, and therefore we cannot provide the perimeter plantings because of the drive access that we need, so instead, we took the square footage requirements that would have been around the building, and we conglomerated them at the end caps of each to provide a green space for those that utilize the building, but also still to have that green space throughout the site. So we don't have them around the full buildings, we have them on the end caps at the same square footage requirements. And deviation number three is to establish a distance requirement for consumption on premises and off-premises from a variety of uses. The one that we are subject to is for dwelling units. As I mentioned, we have Bonita Isles directly to the south, and we need that separation distance from the resident to our site. Those deviations for deviation number three would only be for buildings five and six, the two with the stars. Again, those are the commercial fronting buildings, we're considering a restaurant of the type, so commercial for the separation requirements. I'm going to pass it over to our architect to go over the design of the building and how we got to the nice design.
Good morning, Council members and mayor, my name is Robert Derrickx, managing partner at JMDG Architecture Firm. I'm Naples, Florida, I've been a registered architect for 40 years, about 10 years in Florida myself. As Patty was saying, with the site design, we tried to keep the retail up on Old 41 directly. We've done more of a modern-style architecture with a lot of activities in the building itself, offsets and shading, introducing some textural concrete, and keeping it fairly tonal in overall concept. Our building heights are, do not exceed 30 feet, and we have a flat roof system with the roofs pitching towards the rear. As we go through this site, as Patty was saying, we've got the light industrial to the north backing up to the current industrial that's there. Both of our accesses to the nearest drive aisles, one is four hundred and fifty-nine feet to the north and five hundred and eighty-seven feet to the south. We are maintaining the existing access to the site, so this deviation is in place currently. We're just asking for the approval of the deviation to be maintained because we cannot move the location of our entry point to be compliant with that six hundred and sixty-foot requirement anywhere on the site. So why not keep it the same? Deviation number two is for our perimeter plantings. The code requires a certain amount of plantings around the buildings. While we get into the design of the site, you'll see that all of our buildings along the rear have garage door access, and therefore we cannot provide the perimeter plantings because of the drive access that we need. So instead, we took the square footage requirements that would have been around the building and we conglomerated them at the end caps of each to provide a green space for those that utilize the building, but also still to have that green space throughout the site. So we don't have them around the full buildings. We have them on the end caps at the same square footage requirements. And deviation number three is to establish a distant requirement for consumption on premises and off premises from a variety of uses. The one that we are subject to is for dwelling units. As I mentioned, we have Benita Isles directly to the south, and we need that separation distance from the resident to our site. That, those deviations for deviation number three would only be for buildings five and six, the two with the stars. Again, those are the commercial fronting buildings. We're considering a restaurant of the type, so commercial for the separation requirements. I'm going to pass it over to our architect to go over the design of the building and how we got to the nice design.
Good morning, council members and mayor. My name is Robert Derrick. I'm a managing partner at JMDG Architecture Firm. I'm Naples, Florida. I've been a registered architect for forty years, about ten years in Florida myself. As Patty was saying, with the site design, we tried to keep the, of the retail up on Old Forty-One directly. We've done more of a modern-style architecture with a lot of activities in the building itself, offsets and shading, introducing some textural concrete and keeping it fairly tonal in overall concept. Our building heights are, do not exceed thirty feet, and we have a flat roof system with the, with the roofs pitching towards the rear. As we go through this site, as Patty was saying, we've got the light industrial to the north backing up to the current industrial that's there. And as we step into the, into the site, we go to more industrial, which is a mirror of building one. If I can go to, let's see. Yeah, that's a retail elevations there with storefront glass meeting all the standard architectural design requirements. And as we get into the industrial in building one and two, they have the flexibility of joining spaces. They have the flexibility also of creating an office portion and the garage entrance portion. And this is the building three and four. We're looking at building four here. This abuts the residential. And to the back of the, the garage doors are internal on all these, all these buildings to the site, so they're not seen from the perimeter. We've put plenty of glazing in there. We follow the offset requirements and the master requirements, especially on building four as it joins the residential property. And that's pretty much what we have here presenting. It's all, there's elements throughout the architecture that was reflected from the, the back buildings all the way to the front. The fronts are just a little bit more elaborate. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Sabrina McCabe, registered landscape architect. So I'll start off discussing the lighting. We will be providing the lighting that is fully compliant with the cutoff shield that will prevent any shedding of light off-site, so we will make sure that that meets requirements. Getting into the landscape buffers, as Patty mentioned, we have an enhanced twenty-five-foot buffer to the south against Benita Isles, a fifteen-foot type D against Old Forty-One, five-foot type A to the north, and a fifteen-foot type B to the east. Excuse me. We also have that preserve to the east, which is a gorgeous preserve. We're going to be proposing plant species that are fitting for the area, native species, oaks, pines, sables, gumbo limbos. Those exist currently out there. We'll be providing, as you noticed in Robert's beautiful renderings of the architecture, some palm species along the entryways to add a little bit of a tropical touch to it. We will be enhancing the south and providing a green screen wall where we do have the fence location against Benita Isles. And you'll see that in the line of site exhibit. These are some of the species that we'll be providing, but we have a lot more, as you'll see when we get into the more detail. This is the line of sight against Old Forty-One. We'll be providing our type-D buffer without overlapping the easement and being able to provide that streetscape buffer that we want in front of that nice commercial strip, as well as the larger parking lot island canopy trees where we can fit. This is an existing tree survey that was done. We were able to locate all of the existing trees and the sizes, and there were a few heritage-sized oaks on the site. We did go out and inspect. Right in the center, there's a power line that runs through, so there are a few of those trees that have, their canopy has been cut over time, so they are not even and not very great shape. There is one we do have to remove, and we, we met with the tree advisory board, and they recommended replacing those two trees to equal the sixty-nine inches that you see listed here. So we'll be providing proposed trees in compensation for those sixty-nine inches that will be at least twenty-foot-high trees to equal that total. And so we're fitting those in spaces where we have more space to provide a larger tree size. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Christian Casey, environmental consultant with Atwell. Property was surveyed on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four for the presence of listed species. During the survey, no listed species were found on-site. In addition, no indigenous habitat was found on-site. That's it?
Great presentation.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Copper. I work with Davidson Engineering, a civil engineering firm out of Naples. Since I have not had the pleasure to present in front of this board before, I do want to give a brief introduction. So I graduated from Florida Gulf Coast University with a degree in bachelor's, or bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I've been working with Davidson Engineering for six years now, where I've had the ability to work on projects throughout the state of Florida from Polk County to Marco Island, specializing in site, stormwater management, and utility design. And I currently hold a professional engineering license with the state of Florida. So let's talk about utilities. Potable water service is provided to the site via multiple taps in existing twelve-inch water main on the west side of Old Forty-One. There is an existing fire hydrant located on the site that is fed off of that same main. And there's no public sanitary sewer service available. Currently wastewater is disposed of via septic tank and drain field. When we kicked off the project, we reached out to Benita Springs Utilities to determine if they had adequate capacity for both potable water and sanitary sewer. They have confirmed that they do. For potable water, we plan to utilize the existing twelve-inch water main as a source of water and fire service. We will extend the main throughout the site, creating a loop system. Each building will have its own water meter and fire suppression system. At the request of Benita Springs Utilities, we will intercept an existing ten-inch water main that is south of the property line within an easement and extend it all the way north along the Old Forty-One frontage, providing a stubout for the property to the north should they develop in the future. For sanitary sewer, we will extend an existing gravity sewer main, again located in easement beyond the southern property line. Throughout the site, each building will have its own independent service connection to that main. And again, we will extend that main an additional one hundred feet to the property to the north for their connection whenever they develop in the future. We had to make a couple concessions. One being predominantly buildings five and six shrunk by over two thousand square feet to accommodate easements that are along Old Forty-One. That was to guarantee there is no overlap with Benita Springs Utilities or City of Benita easements along that frontage. Stormwater management. There is virtually no stormwater management on this site as it exists today, at least any that we know of. The northwest, about two acres, discharges into a small stormwater structure that conveys it off-site into an easement along Old Forty-One. And then the remaining eight or so acres, which is kind of she flows off a site into the adjacent properties. We are proposing an underground chamber containment system that will provide full water quality and attenuation per South Florida Water Management District and City of Benita standards. Stormwater will discharge into the Old Forty-One right-of-way via control structure that limits the rate of discharge. And our stormwater management system has been designed to mitigate impacts to the floodplain that encroaches partially onto the property. I have an example up here of the underground chamber containment system that we are proposing. And if we go back to the previous slide, see all the areas outlined in blue, that is where that system will be underneath the paved parking lot. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, Gary Baika with TR Transportation Consultants. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Florida, and I have been sworn in. So I'll briefly go over some of the transportation aspects of this rezoning application. We prepared a traffic impact statement consistent with the rezoning request, which is seeking thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet of commercial retail uses, eighty thousand square feet of storage and mini warehouse uses, and seventy thousand square feet of industrial uses. As part of our analysis, we also prepared a trip generation comparison between our proposed rezoning request and the previous CPD on the, on the subject site. And the previous CPD on the subject site approved up to a hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred square feet of commercial retail uses. So when you compare the two scenarios, our proposed rezoning request actually results in a significant reduction in traffic, potential traffic on the property. More specifically, it results in over seventy-eight percent of reduction during the PMP hours. So that's a significant and very important point to mention for this rezoning case. As part of our traffic study, we also prepared our typical level of service or capacity analysis on the surrounding roadways. In this case, we analyzed Old Forty-One adjacent to the site, and the results of our level of service analysis indicate that Old Forty-One, which is an arterial roadway within the city of Benita Springs, will operate at acceptable levels or receive both with and without the project in the future build-out conditions. In other words, there is sufficient capacity to support this rezoning request. We also analyzed our proposed driveway or existing driveway onto Old Forty-One that's opposite of Burnwood Drive, and that analysis indicated no level of service issues or any significant delays at that location. And again, should this rezoning be approved, we still have to go through a development order process, and at that time, we'll prepare a much-detailed traffic analysis that will get into nitty-gritty details regarding cherrling improvements, et cetera. But at this time, that's all we had to do at this point regarding our traffic study. So do you guys have any questions regarding the traffic study itself?
Yes, thank you. I was going to address this to Patty, but good thing I'm not an engineer. I thought this was really going to help with the reduction of commercial traffic. I thought maybe twenty, twenty-five percent, but it's actually seventy-eight percent. And would it be fair to say the majority of that, or the majority of that is headed south on Old Forty-One in the mornings, going through the traffic circle and down Old Forty-One?
Majority in this case actually will be, let me check. The distribution that we use in our traffic study.
I thought Mr. Magnus would be doing handstands down the hall here with this.
It's actually pretty even split, sixty percent to the north and forty percent to the south. Because you have US Forty-One just to the north of us, and that's where, that's the closest major principal arterial within this, within the vicinity of the site, so that's where majority of trips will actually go to.
And the majority, I think I counted something like sixty-five or sixty-six would appear to be landscape trucks that are parked there overnight, and those will no longer be going up and down Old Forty-One.
Correct, yeah.
Where are they relocating to, if I may ask? Do we know?
That would be a question for somebody else.
Patty's smiling, so.
They will be relocating. Right now, they are at a month-to-month lease with the property owner. They will be going north out of the city of Benita Springs.
Fantastic.
Okay. I will let Patty continue with her presentation.
Thank you.
Going off of traffic, something that we spoke with earlier is about the schedule of uses. And a lot of the traffic that was done, the traffic analysis that was done was against the previous CPD for the site, which did include uses such as drive-throughs, daycare centers, a variety of uses that we no longer have in our schedule of uses. As you'll see on your screen right now, we have the schedule of uses that is for all buildings on the site. We have worked extensively with staff to come to an agreement on what these uses will be and in what buildings they will take place. I will not run through each one of these uses, but the ones on your screen are all agreed to between the applicant and staff. And then we get into building-specific uses. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we're trying to keep the light industrial uses closer to the heavy industrial to the north and then lessen the intensity while we get close to the residential. So on the buildings one and two with the stars, we have all of our light industrial uses. When we move down to buildings three and four, these are mini warehouse, less traffic, less generation, less noise, all of the good things that residents would prefer. There is one condition, which is condition number nine, that the applicant is in agreement with. And then buildings five and six, these are the commercial ones that front Forty-One. This is where that deviation number three comes in for the separation for the alcohol consumption on and off premises. Again, staff is in agreement. The applicant is in agreement with all of our uses. While we get into the neighborhood outreach, the applicant, when they first came to me, they asked, "We need to talk to Benita Isles, and we want to talk to them before anybody else." And I said, "Great, let's have a conversation." So we did hold a voluntary discussion with the board in July of two thousand twenty-four. We gave them an idea of what the site was going to be like and just opened the door for conversation. In that conversation, that was where the initial mention of the request for a fence was included along all property lines that abut Benita Isles, and our applicant did not bat an eye and said, "We will provide a fence. It is not required, but we are willing to do that to provide security for you as the residents of Benita Isles, but also for our tenants who will come into our site." From that, we did do a follow-up discussion with the HOA board in September. That is before city staff saw our, our presentation, our application. We presented it to the HOA board so that they were aware of what was going in. Sorry, staff, but even before staff saw it. And then we did do our pre-submitting NIM, which is a requirement by the city. We did host that both in person and on Zoom to allow for flexibility for attendance. We did have quite a few, quite a few residents show up there. The room was full. The Zoom room was full. We did hold a voluntary NIM the next day during business hours that was just online to re-present that presentation so that everybody, if they had childcare needs, they were able to see that presentation again. And then in between the pre-submitting NIM and the post-sufficiency NIM, we did reach out to the HOA board again to open the door for conversation. They did not take us up on the opportunity, but we did offer it. We held our post-sufficiency NIM in August of this year. We did have people attend via Zoom, and then that evening, I had quite a few people give me a ring and ask for a copy of the presentation. I was then told that it was shared amongst their community Facebook page to ensure that all residents were aware of what was going on. And then the city sent out a mailer notice. I also sent out a mailer notice for the zoning board, so we have really left that door open for communication from the Benita Isles residents throughout this entire process and to all the residents surrounding. The notices didn't just go to Benita Isles, they go to a radius of the property, so we have had conversations with the Moose Lodge. They said, "We're excited to have nice new neighbors." So there's been plenty of opportunity for discussion from, from residents, and so far, we've received great feedback. Looking at the LDC criteria for a rezone, there are a variety of requirements that both staff has to compare us to, but also that I compare us to when we submit our application in. While doing that comparison, we are compliant with the Benita Plan and the Land Development Code, subject to our three deviation requests. One is existing on-site. We do meet or exceed the location standard set for the proposed uses. We worked really hard with staff to come to an agreement on those uses. The intensities and general uses are consistent with the comprehensive plan that was agreed to with staff and by the zoning board. The request is compatible with the existing planned uses in the surrounding neighborhood. As I mentioned, we have heavy industrial to the north. We're bringing that light industrial, commercial down to residential, so we're really lessening the intensity while we get to the residential uses that surround us. There are adequate public facilities. As we've determined, we will be providing stormwater as there is none on-site existingly. And the deviations, they are to protect the, the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. So in conclusion, we are consistent with the, the vision of the city. We have a huge reduction in impact to the city of seventy-eight percent of traffic. We do enhance the capability, the compatibility of the site, given the heavy industrial and residential within four parcels of each other. We have a balanced development that provides the commercial along Forty-One to get that view corridor for Forty-One, and then the less intense uses to the rear. We did receive staff recommendation of approval, and we did receive unanimous approval from the zoning board. We hope to have the same from you. I'll open it for questions.
Questions? Jesse said?
I know, I just had some comments and thoughts on the whole thing, so if this is the time for that. Is there any more presentation?
No presentation.
No more presentation? Okay, so I, there was a lot of work put into this, and I do appreciate that. My issue is kind of as, they, they spoke about the long-term vision, and I'm just not quite sure. Okay, so let's put it this way. One-third of the project fits the vision that I'm thinking of. When we were in the budget meeting, we were discussing, hey, look at what we did with the downtown when we focused on it. What if we expanded that entire corridor? I'm just not sure that industrial nor storage are the first things that come to mind in regards to how we're going to expand and make Old Forty-One nicer. So, I mean, even the commercial piece of it, there's allowance for schools, churches. Those are both high-traffic items also to consider as we expand into the downtown, but other than the commercial component, I just don't really know how this fits into the direction that we're going as a city. And I'm not, it's nothing that they did wrong. And it's nothing, the plans, the buildings look nice. It's not that. It's about how much money, how many millions of dollars we've put in the downtown. And as we expand that footprint, that focus, I don't know that industrial or storage units are, are the future of what that area should be.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I, I think this is far enough north to where it's kind of removed from our downtown, our primary downtown area, and it's pretty consistent with what's up there right now on the other side of the street with Burnwood.
It is consistent now, but it, that- Well, it is, it is consistent now, but that same argument could have made for the downtown before we did the downtown. I mean, it was not a great area before, so if we put something that didn't matter down there before, it wouldn't have mattered, but it matters now. So it's like, if we talk about the Old Forty One corridor, that is a big piece of Benita. So it's like, as that continues to grow and thrive, is storage units and industrial use the best area? That's industrial use and storage, I think of somewhere off of Leeko. I don't think of that as, look at what we have going on Sugar Shack in that downtown, in that little area. As we expand that outward, is storage and industrial what we have in mind for our main corridor through our downtown and through, and through the middle of our city? And I, in my opinion, again, nothing against how they put it together. I appreciate all the work is there, but when I think of the middle of our city, I don't think industrial. I don't think, I, I, and we have storage units all over the place. Why don't we throw a car wash and a dollar store in there?
Yeah, like I said, I understand where you're coming from. It's, it's light industrial, not industrial.
It's the point of what it is.
And, you know, rooftop and Sugar Shack, you know, they rely a lot on people getting out of work. And so this would be more working-class people, you know, just up the road and close to the downtown to enjoy it when they get off of work.
If the applicant could respond as well, Jesse. We, we understand. And when we were designing this, we actually considered the building heights in that design of thirty feet for all buildings. That way, the two commercial buildings that are along Forty One with those commercial uses will block the view of the light industrial and the storage that is in the rear that does serve a purpose for the community. But when we were also working with staff for the schedule of uses, the uses that are agreed upon between the applicant and staff are actually less than what the code would allow for a commercial plan development. So the code allows for a variety of more uses. You may have that red line document in your staff report. We've even lessened those uses because staff had a similar situation where they said, "We would like to enhance this site. Are you willing to lessen some of your uses?", which we were agreeing to. So we, we understand and that's why the design came in, that we wanted the commercial in the front to really get that old Forty One view. And then the uses that would be in the rear would only be the people who would be utilizing those facilities. So the light industrial, they're going to come, they're going to do their work inside of their unit. And then they're going to leave the car condos, they're going to come, they're going to park their vehicle and then they're going to leave. So we understand where your viewpoint is on that and we were considerate of that from the start on the design.
I appreciate the concessions. I really do. I think there's a lot that comes into what you can do in regards to concessions. But to me, it's just, again, that car condos is not what I've pictured for the middle of the city. As we've, as you can appreciate, our downtown ten to fifteen years ago was a dilapidated trailer park that had all of the worst parts of the world focused solely right down there. Now, it is one of the most pristine downtowns in all of Southwest Florida. We during our budgets discussed trying to make that footprint larger. And again, if you did this, if this was all commercial or a little bit of residential and some commercial, I would be a lot more comfortable. It is the idea of sticking car condo storage units into this area that we're trying to make nicer. Like if you're trying to make something nicer, you don't stick storage units in it.
We hear you.
And not to over, overbeat this point, but the industrial is truly light in that there is no way for a semi truck to even get through the site. We, we agreed to a condition. These are job generating in, light industrial uses. As an example, if someone is making, is making small parts that will go into bigger parts, they don't have a place to go today, so we're providing that accommodation within the site. These are small suites in terms of the industrial, so we're not going to be able to accommodate something like heavy industrial that you may be thinking. The car condominiums are a demand-driven use outside of the floodplain. We're responding to market conditions in that respect. And, and, and so what, what the applicant has done, because they're an expert in car condominiums, is designed the highest quality buildings, but integrated that into a site that generates jobs, that attracts people to the commercial at the frontage. So if we look at this in its totality, I, 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 I implore you to look at it in its totality. Because I think that, that this was in intentional mix, excuse me, use mix that is market-driven. But also, we, we, we understand the Old Forty One extension at, at, at some point. So that is exactly why the commercial buildings front Old Forty One.
Yeah, Jim?
First of all, I want to compliment the outreach to the community. Too many times we, we neglect to incorporate the input from the community, leveraging Zoom and that type of stuff, particularly where you've got the summertime presentations and so forth. Thank you for that. Had the opportunity to sit down with community development yesterday and had a couple of questions. And I know some of this is not specifically about zoning, but areas of, of concern should this be approved. The first of which is the variety of mixed uses that you've put into this development, mixing commercial enterprises, restaurants, stuff like that, with other variety of warehouse and stuff like that and getting stuff to the, the two industrial buildings. The delivery of materials to go ahead and do light manufacturing, that type of thing. Concerned about only having one entrance. And I know there are limitations and, and I do not speak from experience, I speak from common sense. And that whatever we do, if we move forward with this, that we respect the concern and safety of the people using the facility and at the same time allow those forty-foot trucks to get in. I'd like clarification and I, I apologize for my ignorance in terms of not knowing specifically what a group one is. You reference in building one and two, leather products group one. Can you clarify both that and what lumber products group one means?
Leather products group one is, and I, I would like to consult the code actually, because the code defines what the group ones are. But when, when we went through the uses, the less intense uses are group one. And then when they jump down to group two, they're more intense. I will pull the code to read exactly what the group one is. But when we went through it with, with staff, we actually sat on a call with the code up in front of us, read each line and said, "Would you consider this use?" And the applicant said, "No, we would not consider that use." If you give me a moment, I could pull the code.
No, it's fine. And I think here's my concern, and you can, between now and next, next time in the discussion, is specifically the amended version that was given today in terms of the staff comments regarding fabricated metal products. I see we've now officially incorporated the release of hazardous materials. And that, my, my concern, knowing that typically dealing with both furniture manufacturing, stuff like that, leather products, sometimes there's the use of hazardous materials. And my biggest concern is that the same release of hazardous materials would also apply to those functions. So that is my.
We would have, there is one condition, we will have no hazardous materials. And that goes from smell, sight, sound, there's two other ones, but we're, we're being very cognizant of that. And with the garage doors, a lot of the uses you'll see has the doors being closed at all times. And I do have the code just so that we can answer that one. Leather and leather products manufacturing group one is general woodworking manufacturing. As in group two, that would be mobile homes and prefabricated buildings. So in that group one, you have the manufacturing of products that do not require tanning or finishing, whereas group two, you would require that, so.
So there would be no tanning or finishing or any of the stuff?
Correct. Correct. This is somebody who their wife doesn't want them in the garage anymore. Go ahead and finish, finish that out, out there.
And that would apply both to the leather, leather goods and also to the, where was my notes?
Fabrication of metal products.
Lumber and wood products?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question and a comment on the eighty thousand square feet of storage mini warehouse uses. That storage would includes the automobile car condominiums, correct?
Correct, and those are only in buildings three and four.
So what square footage or what percent of that would be the car condominiums? Forty, fifty?
Because I will, forty thousand. Forty percent, excuse me, forty percent.
Forty percent, so we're talking relatively minimal other storage uses.
Correct.
Comment, I think I made it come about this last month. This is what we're looking for on the north corridor of Old Forty One. I mean, I used to be a, a customer of the landscape company there, but I'm looking at that, it's an eyesore. What's going to be there now, people are going to drive down that are from other parts of the state looking to invest in Benita. And they're going to see north Old Forty One and say, "Oh, they've started. It's cleaner, the fact that they're putting stormwater, stormwater treatment in there is exciting." And limited input or egress to the property, it's nothing but a benefit. I, again, reducing the number of commercial trips up and down during peak hours. I mean, we're actually going to see that when this project goes in. I'm excited. It's not even in my district, but it's certainly going to affect it. So thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions?
Just, in driving by daily, it is a huge eyesore. And I think the vision and what I saw today, it looks beautiful. I'm just concerned with the storage units also. I feel like we have them all over. But, you know, the way you have them set up and the way they look, they, it all looks good. I'm confused with the, with the delivery like of trucks and stuff. So how big, like if you're having things taken back there, are you able to have, you know, if you have a, a store back there grocery store or anything that, that restaurant, how are they getting materials? Are they able to have the semi trucks or is it not?
No, semi trucks are not allowed and there's a condition in the staff report, they're not allowed per the code. And staff has added a condition to ensure that. So the access to the site would again be maintained, delivery trucks, oh, you have new technology and I'm excited to use it. So you would access the site, you would come in, behind buildings five and building six, you see those loading zones. Those would be for buildings five and six, but also each one of our buildings, one, two, three and four, all have that garage door access. So anybody who's coming in, think about your Amazon box truck would potentially be the maximum size. They would come in, they would park inside of their unit, have their delivery, open up the garage door, accept their delivery and would exit through that same corridor, through that same egress point. So the site doesn't accommodate for anything larger than a box truck, both per code, but also per site design as well.
It's not a concern of the businesses being able to get their products?
No, developers very comfortable with it and it actually will lessen the traffic, so we're not questioning it.
If, if all goes well and, and the, the space is occupied as you hope it is, how many, you have an estimate on how many jobs will be created by this project?
I will look to my developer for that. Give me one moment. We don't have that accurate number. We will get it before second reading. But between the development of this, this will not be a phased development, so everything will be built at one time. So we have the job generation from the building of the infrastructure and then each of the units, both the leasing and then their employees per their lease. So there will be a, a significant job generation. We just don't have a, a number that we can quantify just yet. We also don't know the tenants of the buildings yet, so that will, that will affect that as well.
Let me ask it a different way. How much, how much parking are you providing for the tenants that are going to be utilizing the commercial space other than the condo, car condos? Let's put it like that.
The site has adequate parking, but I'll pull up Brandon Copper for this.
Brandon Copper, civil engineer. We have guaranteed the site will have adequate parking per the land development code. The initial couple buildings, the first two, five and six that you see are underneath the city's combined commercial use code. So you kind of sum up the building areas, apply that rate and that will be acknowledged there. The remaining are either meeting or exceeding code, especially when it comes to those car condos, since they will be fenced and gated off. We are not dipping the excess parking for those buildings and spreading it across the other sites. So we're making sure that we're providing adequate parking for the ultimate end user. And since the ultimate end user is a little bit ambiguous at this point in time, the developer is committed to not only maintaining an active list of who is leasing out the space, but sharing that information with the city. So whoever comes in as a tenant, they will guarantee that they have adequate parking to support the use.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, staff, you're good? All right, we'll see at second reading then. Or any, is there any public comment on this?
Yes, if there's any public comment.
Any public comment on this item?
We've talked to them enough, they know. Thank you, board. We appreciate it. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thanks, Patty. All right, there was a request to take a five-minute break, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was like eight, eight, nine months ago. All right, and I'll call the meeting back to order. All right, uh, moving on to, uh, item B. Mike?
This is the first reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, rezoning approximately 4.6 plus or minus acres from the two-family conservation TFC dash two zoning designation to a residential planned development RPD zoning designation to develop up to 42 dwelling units located at 11035, 11089, 11113, 11125 Dean Street, strap numbers 36 dash 47 dash 25 dash B4 dash 00064.0000, 36 dash 47 dash 25 dash B4 dash 00063.0000, 36 dash 47 dash 25 dash B4 dash 00062.0010, 36 dash 47 dash 25 dash B4 dash 00065.0000, 36 dash 47 dash 25 dash B4 dash 00064.0010. Benita Springs, Florida, 34135, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, uh, I just want you all to know the strap number thing. We just put that in there to torture Mike. Would you prefer that we take that out going forward? There's no reason for it to be in there.
Save us 10 minutes on every meeting.
So, okay.
I made the motion.
So again, this item is a quasi judicial item. So any, anyone who's going to testify or speak on the public hearing today, would you please stand and be sworn? Do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Indeed.
All right, so the, um, I, I'll give a little bit of preference on this one and, and I don't know if you'll want to hear the entire presentation. But as you recall, you've heard this project back in April. At that time, it was denied without prejudice. The applicant filed a petition under the Florida Land Use and Environmental Speed Resolution Act, which is essentially a, a safety valve process the state set up to encourage parties to discuss issues rather than litigate them. We met mediation outside council, David Dariac and I, along with the city planners and Councilman Fullick. Met for an all-day discussion about the issues that were raised by the public and the council during that April hearing. What you see before you is reduced density, some changes to the site layout, setbacks and amenity centers that hopefully incorporate all of those issues. And it comes with both David and my recommendations to go forward. So we have the applicant here. They have a small presentation just highlighting the changes. But we're, we're, we can proceed however you want for first reading.
I, I think because of the mediation and, and we've previously had it, in a, in a bridged version of, uh, you know, just highlight of the changes would be good.
Okay, I would like to put on the record that this case was re-advertising in accordance with Florida statutes and we'll go ahead and let the applicant go then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, counsel. For the record, Noel Davies, the law firm of Davies Duke, on behalf of the applicant, Sagamore 955 RDF LLC. I agree with, uh, your city attorney with respect to his comments and really wanted to take this opportunity today to extend our gratitude to the city for the hard work from both sides on this matter, particularly to council member Fullick, uh, who spent the day with us earlier this month or earlier last month, as well as your city attorney, Mr. Rooney, outside special counsel, David Dariac, and also city manager, Arlene Hunter, and, and your community development director, Mr. Dolmer. We, we spent a full day working very hard on this matter with, uh, with a skilled mediator and with all the pertinent people in the room, uh, on both the city side and my client's professional team. As Derek mentioned, um, we're pleased that we're, we're here today presenting to you this, this agreement that we worked through. We're glad that we were able to, um, reach an agreement. And, and again, we, we, we appreciate everyone's hard work and the time commitment that has been required to, to get us there on, on all sides. It was a, it was a collaborative and, and cooperative discussion. I think, I think everyone worked well together and exceptionally hard to, as Derek mentioned, incorporate the feedback received from the prior public hearings on this matter. From, from, feedback from the public, feedback from, uh, city council members. Uh, and we were able to do that. And, and most importantly, include significant concessions from my client, particularly with respect to density and a significant reduction to that as set forth in the settlement agreement. So this is what the revised master concept plan looks like. I'm happy to take any questions that anyone has on the specifics set forth on the master plan. And then here are the key points contemplated in the settlement agreement, including that density reduction in the number of units from 48 down to 42. A copy of the full settlement agreement, as well as the revised MCP, is in your backup for today's item. Again, we are very grateful and appreciative of the, of the efforts, the collaborative spirit that we worked through with, uh, with the city at mediation. We would respectfully request that we're moved to second reading. Thank you all very much for your time and consideration. And of course, I'm happy to answer any additional questions or any questions that you all have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll see you at second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, any, any public comment? All right, seeing none.
Oh, wait, one second here. We do have one registered speaker. I apologize. Al Barrick?
Hi, I'm Al Barrick, neighbor to this property. Has this been decided already? I imagine it has as far as a, an agreement that the attorney just mentioned. So I, I think the public has some of their concerns. It's nine o'clock in the morn- morning this meeting started and my neighbors are at work, so they can't be here. But, um, I thought I'd just voice some of their concerns. But if this has already been agreed to, is, is it a mute point for me to voice any of those at this point?
No.
Go ahead.
Okay, okay. Well, well, they, uh, my neighbors, when they saw that the drop was from 48 to 42, they, they didn't see that as very substantial. They, they still, I think when this project started out, it was originally 42. Then I think they acquired more land. But, um, it, it doesn't solve the density problem. And, uh, they feel like we've been abandoned and partially ignored. There's been overwhelming objection to this at the firehouse meetings. Since then, uh, the zoning department, uh, objected to this. There's been a petition of neighbors, uh, over a hundred neighbors signed a petition. Nobody said no. They want this in, in our immediate neighborhood. The council voted against it on April 2nd. And we think that the public's threshold, the threshold for the public's disapproval has been met. Many of our concerns have been voiced, narrow streets, intersections that don't work, school traffic, and now an expanded school that hasn't been, we, we haven't realized the impact of that yet. Resource issues, safety issues, infrastructure impacts, destroying the character and, and liability of, of the neighborhood. Wild jaw-dropping growth east of 75 impacting Benita Beach Road. My wife commented on that. We went to the Publix over there. We used to go to the other Publix. But, um, you, you just look across the street and it's just boomtown. I guess that's good, but limited, you know, there's limited parking at the beach. Benita Beach Boulevard is a zoo, especially during, um, the intersections don't work, especially during, um, the, the season. The objections of the community have been consistent throughout this process with substantial participation by the public. The developer has not presented a meaningful reduction in the unit. The project should remain denied. The community is clearly voicing that the zoning should be TFC two and the developers should plat the lots according to the current zoning. So, uh, I thought I'd just mention that, uh, on behalf of people that can't be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Any other public comment? All right, uh, second reading will be on the 15th at 5:30, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Going to pull item B. Is everybody else happy with the rest of it or?
Yes, motion to approve, second.
Motion and second. Mike?
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
And councilmember Carr left the meeting at 10:29 for an appointment. Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mike. Um, I pulled item B. You had mentioned councilwoman Carr had a comment on it.
Yeah, councilmember Carr requested a modification to the draft minutes. And that modification is to reflect a statement she made under mayor and councilmember reports, prayers for Charlie Kirk and his family. And I have no problem making that, that change. If there's, want to prove the, the minutes on with that modification, I don't object. I, I can affirm she said, that she said that statement.
So motion and?
Second.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, item nine, presentations. Presentation by DPZ co-design of the draft Lyles Plaza Vision Study.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Javier, uh, with DPZ will be joining us remotely. Should there be any technical issues, we have the ability to advance the presentation here. There is also a video as well, um, so we may have to disconnect during that video. That could be the cause of the delayed feedback we're receiving, the loop. So, but we're going to continue as best we can. Javier, can you hear us?
You can hear me.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Nicole is at the podium, so she can help advance anything that, if you need assistance.
I believe you will be advancing for me the slides.
Perfect, perfect.
And playing the video at the, at the closing of the, the presentation. So if I may begin, I want to first of all, thank you all for welcoming DPZ co-design once more to help advance some of the ideas for, for your great, um, city. It is hard to believe that we have been advising you all for over seven years. And I'm sorry that I'm not there in person to personally present these. I had a complicated travel schedule. But it has been our privilege to advise a community that is so forward-thinking and so, uh, interested in, in its commitment to celebrating its future, but also remembering its past. And this Lyles Hotel Plaza that we were asked to review and look and come up with ideas that could enhance it, I think is, is emblematic of that, that commitment. Benita Springs, um, actually is a very unique community in southwest Florida. It's one of the very few older Florida communities with an actual authentic town center. You have, obviously it was, it was, uh, derived from its location along a railroad, but you're not crafted out of some suburban strip road with the shopping center. You actually have an authentic main street that you have been lovingly improving, as you can see in this ghosted image, on the cover image. You have a, a town square in the form of Riverside Park and the Banyan Tree Square that very clearly marks the center of town. And you have this amazing resource in the Lyles Hotel area and its plaza and its relationship to the Imperial River. You know, it has a history. It was an interesting history. It was an historic RV park and a fish camp. And today it is, uh, uh, thanks to the investments that you have made. You can see from this image that it has been landscaped. There's a beautiful fountain. You brought in a historic structure that, uh, people felt very strongly about. And, um, so this is why we're here. This is why we were asked, because it now is evident that it needs some help. And there are some on the council who feel that, uh, the city's attention needs to be focused on it. So in the next slide, you'll see, um, the Arts Festival, but also the connection to Old Forty-One. So in the next image, you'll see the existing conditions of this plaza, what we're calling the Lyles Hotel Plaza with this historic building, that we're not addressing actually in this, in this study. This was all about the exterior spaces surrounding it. But it's a great asset. You have an amazing collection of features here that were at one point part of a larger plan, and it almost seemed like those ideas were not carried to fruition. And so today, it's a little shabby, it's a little outdated. You have this entry-arrival court that's devoid of much shade. You have this interesting feature, the water tower. So all of these elements are waiting to be polished. It's like a gem that's waiting to be polished. So we see our role in this assignment as clarifying what you have in terms of the assets, helping to complete them, and better define them, and then where possible, maybe suggest ways to rethink them. In the next image, you can see a sketch that we did in our workshop last, actually in August. We did it in our office, a team of designers, and our partner in charge, Galina Tatcheva, she helped sort of guide our discussion of it, and then we had Arlene and Nicole and her staff sort of participating remotely. But we identified these as the major focal points of the project. The plot and its approach from Old Forty-One, the fountain, the historic building, the driveway, of course, the hotel at the center of it all, and to the north, the green spaces that are currently used as an event venue, and of course, how they relate to the river, the Artist's Village beyond, and then, of course, the event lawn. Next slide. During our workshop, we talked about, you know, the obvious elements that you could add to enhance a place like the Lyles Plaza. And we made a lot of sort of discussions about pergolas being added to mark certain spaces and make them feel special. Your interest in honoring your history could be served by possibly building some memory structures. These are examples on the right, one from Philadelphia, the other one, I think, is from Arkansas, of the memory of former buildings and cherished structures that could be honored just in a very simple metal structure. The next image, we also spoke about the importance of lighting. You know, at night, when there's no activity going on, the beauty of seeing a well-lit park is always very attractive, especially if you have a community that's celebrating its restaurant life and nightlife. We talked about that maybe this is a place where families could come in the evenings when, right before dinner, and keep the kids occupied, and string lighting and projections are a great way to make a place like Lyles Hotel Plaza feel safe. And also, another element that we talked about in the next slide is the idea of bringing shade. The artists were, mentioned this in particular, and Nicole was very vocal about the fact that we need, certain areas in the park need more shade. So we showed these images of how some very ambitious shade structures could be envisioned, but also very simple ones, and how lighting could be used to enhance them in the evening. And in addition to this, in the next slide, we talked about the, you know, celebrating the importance of art in the form of sculptures, and not just static sculptures, but maybe some that are interactive and at night come to life with light and sound. Some of these are actually in downtown Doral, one of our projects, where the developer has installed a series of art sculptures that light up, and when you touch them or move close to them, they play music, or the lights change, or actually, the two images on the left actually are, interact to the point where the projected image changes as you walk in front of it. You can, might also be very ambitious in your scope and think, maybe we can do a portal like they did in New York City. I think this connects to a screen and a camera in Ireland, so that could be an interesting possibility. In the next slide, you'll see the existing conditions, and moving on to the following slide, these are our fourteen areas of proposals. These were the fourteen areas that we identified during our workshop for maybe places that you could consider improving, enhancing, or completely reimagining. In the next slide, connecting back to that idea of art, public art being celebrated, you may not be able to see very clearly the red dots that are sprinkled throughout this master plan, but they represent places for the sculpture and other decorative markers to be positioned. And of course, there could be more, and they could be in different locations. But the idea is that throughout this area, you have sort of an itinerary of markers that celebrate the arts culture in Benita. And in the next slide, is our, you know, and then, actually, this actually further illustrates the idea that sculptures don't need to be just observed and seen in a static way. They could actually be interacted with those kids that are waiting to go to dinner. They could be climbed on, they could be swung from. The swings you see in the large image is actually from our project in Miami, the Design District, where these swings fill up an entire square, a little courtyard, that are very popular with kids and families. But when they're not being used, they just look like sculptures. Now, the next image, the next slide, is probably illustrating the primary recommendation that we're making for bringing Lyles Plaza Hotel, the Plaza space together. It's about unifying the paving materials throughout, and this includes repaving the entry drive. Right now, your entry drive looks like a driveway into an alley, and I think it would go a long way if you paved it consistently with the paving that goes into the Artist's Village, into the two walkways that go to the river, and then maybe adding smaller paved areas, such as a path through the green space that divides the two green, the green areas to the north of the hotel, one of which we're proposing becomes a more formal gathering venue, since we know that many people choose this location for weddings. So more on that in a moment. And of course, the reason for paving the driveways to celebrate the pedestrian approach, to not make it look like it's a place for cars. So we're also restructuring the bollards a little bit. So that's our major proposal, and it'll appear in many of the slides you're about to see. And the next image is our proposal for replacing the Good Bread Grocery Building, that it's in, it was a valiant effort to move it and to restore it, but it's in really bad shape, and it probably is better served as a memory of what used to be on Old Forty-One, the stores and the businesses that used to populate your main street. And we're doing that in the form of, or in this proposal, of a gazebo that has a screen towards the street, kind of emulating the facades of the old single-story merchant stores. And then in the next slide, you'll see that there is a, there's actually an exhibit inside. It's, our idea is to maybe use that as an outdoor museum to the history of Old Forty-One and Benita Springs, starting with, of course, the old RV camp and the fish camp that was here, the different Main Street stores, the post office. Those could all be panels that your historic society could help put together. And then behind, in the prior slide, you saw that there was a garden behind it, and this green space with the tall hedge is actually very useful, because it is, it would screen the parking that's behind. So that, the Good Bread Building does that currently, and you should keep that screen so that you're not seeing the parked cars. And then the next slide, the one following this one, of course, the fountain is the major feature of the hotel and the space in front of it, and we were asked to look at it to maybe give an idea for refreshing it. And rather than removing it, or totally reinventing it in this proposal, we're thinking maybe the perimeter of it could receive a few additions. And one of our designers proposed adding landscape planters, a few sort of raised table-like elements with benches for people to sit and actually get close to the fountain. And then at the four cardinal points, you have waterfalls that then have a smaller bench next to it, in front of it, to engage the children. So there could be a lower channel of water that it relates to and pours into. So obviously, there's a cost associated with this, but this is sort of the beginning of how you might embellish that existing fountain without really changing it. And then the next image, you'll see the intention for it to be surrounded by shade trees and benches. So it's not sort of an object in the field, it's actually an object in a room defined by the landscaping. And there you see the waterfalls and the benches and the tables. So it's kind of like a modern sculpture almost, but honoring the history of it. In the next image, that idea I mentioned previously of creating a new pavilion that could be used for weddings or other gatherings, and then defining a green oval space with benches that could serve as the container for the gathered guests for these events. And then, of course, flanking that space in the pavilion at the river are two new overlooked decks that celebrate the connection to the Imperial River. You have a very active kayak rental program that we support, and that would remain untouched, and it would activate the northwest corner, as it currently does. The next slide talks about the actual intervention around the hotel. This, this study did not involve revisiting or actually studying the internal organization or redevelopment or rehabilitation of the building itself. I think from our standpoint, we feel that it, as a building, it should be maintained. It's a great resource for the park, especially considering all the events that you have here. You need a back of house, you need a staging room for your staff and for the people organizing the various events, brides to get dressed in. So I think it's an amazing asset that not many municipalities have in their parks, so it's certainly something to retain. We would suggest maybe enhancing the front porch, making it a little bit more generous, and then maybe adding some landscaping that could double as stormwater filtration trenches. So it's something that you could use, this project or whatever enhancement project you embark upon, to improve the stormwater retention and handling of your rainfall, which is an issue here, this area flooded during Ian, and of course, the city did a magnificent job of cleaning it up, but it is an issue that you will be dealing with in the future. The next slide, it addresses the arrival court of the hotel and the entrance to the Artist's Village. At the moment, it's kind of a barren plaza, unshaded, unfurnished, and we're proposing just defining it with a few elements, creating a little grouping of trees and benches to highlight the water tower, which is the main element that you see from Old Forty-One when you approach the square. So we think it just needs a little bit of highlighting to be made more of. And in the next slide, you'll see it from the air, the grouping of trees. Of course, architects love to use palm trees, because they're so architectural, but we would also encourage that these six trees be more shade-creating species. But you see the large porch, you see the reshaping of the bollards that emphasize that as a square and not so much as a driveway, and you see the water tower as a feature that's celebrated. In the next slide, you see that we actually take that further and add a pergola to the water tower, and we're proposing the relocation of the ramp that currently takes you up to the Artist's Village. We think that, you know, in the spirit of being friendly to all the visitors, your ADA-sensitive visitors really should not feel like they're taking a side entrance up to the Artist's Village. So relocating the start of the ramp next to the steps that the able-bodied people take, I think, is appropriate. It also helps set off the water tower to greater effect, and you'll see in the next slide that it actually enables an idea that we feel very strongly about. This is just one possible way to do it, but we feel that at this end of the Artist's Village, next to the water tower, is a great location for a small stage and a set of steps that go right down to the event lawn. This was something that was highly, that was kind of suggested by the artists that I met. They were lamenting the disconnect between the elevated podium of the Artist's Village and the event lawn where the Arts Festival takes place, and this would provide a direct access to that, also giving you a smaller stage venue for events. Sometimes you don't need the full ban shell main stage. You can, you can imagine children's groups using this stage for more intimate presentations. And of course, here you see that the moving of the ramp actually helps create this stage. The next slide, you see a view of it from the event lawn, where the rounded steps are actually a portal to the Artist's Village beyond, which you see we've actually enhanced with a few other features that I'll talk to about in a second. But you see also the connection to the arrival court in front of the hotel. Now, north of the hotel in the next slide, we, one thing that I noticed when I was visiting is the beautiful, large oak tree that you have there, and how this is really an underutilized space, or it seemed underutilized, and it's probably, during the Arts Festival, it's probably filled with people, but we thought about making it a little bit more formal by paving it in a special way so that the center of, around the tree gets a special color. And then to the west of the tree is an opportunity in between the planters to add a series of pavilions, of lightweight structures that you'll see in the next slide, that could straddle the podium and come down to this, what we're calling the North Court, so that it could serve the, whatever event and whatever functions and fundraising events you have, it's a place to locate the food and beverage, it's a place for maybe seating for people to sit down in the shade or protected from the rain. So it's a multi-use set of three pavilions that basically are just inserted in between your planters. And you'll see how they also participate in the Artist's Village on the upper level. In the next slide, you begin to see our idea. We took the shade structure idea and created sort of a vault over the village, over each of the cottages. This could be, you know, brought to life in any number of ways, but this was just sort of our illustration of the fact that it would be great to be able to create shade up there at the, at the heart of the village with the pergola, and then with these new pavilions that we're adding, which you see on the, on the right side, that kind of provide temporary usage when there's no festival going on or there are no artists, but it could also be a great sort of weekend market kind of pavilion, or it could just be for seating. And you'll see in the next slide, a close-up of that, how they just fit perfectly in between the existing planters and help complete the village as a space. This is something the artists mentioned during my visit, that they really wanted to feel like they were in a completed thought in their village, and that right now, it feels like it's an incomplete space. And then you'll, in the next image, you'll see the, an aerial view of both the Artist's Village and the North Court below, and how the new pavilions kind of bridge the two spaces. Now, in the foreground of this image, you'll see the steps that are currently being used as a stage and for some events, and in the next slide, you'll see how we would. We took the shade structure idea and created sort of a vault over the village, over each of the cottages. This could be, you know, brought to life in any number of ways, but this was just sort of our illustration of the fact that it would be great to be able to create shade up there at the heart of the village with the pergola and then with these new pavilions that we're adding, which you see on the right side, that kind of provide temporary usage when there's no festival going on or there are no artists. But it could also be a great sort of weekend market kind of pavilion, or it could just be for seating. And you'll see in the next slide a close-up of that, how they just fit perfectly in between the existing planters and help complete the village as a space. This is something the artists mentioned during my visit, that they really wanted to feel like they were in a completed thought in their village, and that right now it feels like it's an incomplete space. And then in the next image, you'll see an aerial view of both the Artist Village and the North Court below and how the new pavilions kind of bridge the two spaces. Now, in the foreground of this image, you'll see the steps that are currently being used as a stage and for some events. And in the next slide, you'll see how we would propose enhancing that with special paving and slightly reshaped lawns to create kind of like a seating or standing area in front of the top of those steps. And then, of course, the pavilion that could serve for weddings and other gatherings, kind of enclosing it more effectively. So it's just a matter of reshaping that lawn and paving the area to that feels more like an intentional stage area. And then you'll see in the next image a 3D rendering of that. Now, the last area of intervention that we're proposing is in the next slide, and it's, of course, the event lawn itself. From the rounded steps we saw earlier, we're proposing a new path on the west side sort of to complete the ADA-accessible path around the event lawn and formalizing it as a space. And then at the end, where it meets the ban shell, I couldn't help but notice when I went to take pictures of it, of that view, that what you saw, and it's kind of hard to see in this photograph, at the base of the ban shell, of course, are the restroom doors. So an easy fix for that, if anyone's concerned about that view, is just to plant a tall hedge in front of it in that green space you already have. And then that would take care of that. Now, in addition to these ideas, we thought it might be nice to also imagine a slightly more ambitious program where if you had the budget or the donor to fund it, you might want to consider the following ideas. In the next slide, you'll see where they're located. They have to do with the memory pavilion idea, around the fountain, the riverfront overlooks, and the arrival court, and then the fountain at the top of the Artist Village. So idea one in the next slide is something that was discussed with Arlene and Nicole, is that maybe you want to, at some point in the future, build a proper community hall, a place of gathering. We're envisioning that this place could take about a 2,000-square-foot facility with bathrooms and maybe a small kitchen for gatherings and meetings and community workshops. So it would be shaped in a very traditional way. That's how we're envisioning it, with a porch very similar to the market across the street, calling to mind the buildings that were once, and there still are in many places, still on Old Forty-One. So this was a sketch from the workshop that was transferred into a SketchUp computer drawing. Now, in the next slide, you'll see a more ambitious vision for reimagining the fountain and actually carrying the pavement all the way across to the community hall. And this fountain would be an interactive fountain. It would have, at either end, would have features that a child or a passerby could activate a water flow from it, but it would still have, as you can see in the next image, the idea before of the little tables where you could come and have your lunch or bring your computer laptop if there's Wi-Fi in the area. And there you see the children playing with the fountain. Now, in the next slide, you'll see a more refined image of that fountain in being used with the benches and the shade structures, shade trees around it. And then if we zoom in in the next slide to the hotel itself, possibly adding more porch spaces is something that you might want to consider so that it's an easy way to add covered outdoor space for your park. In this instance, we're adding a porch, a long porch along the front, which that elevation is a little bit blank at the moment. So I think a porch would probably be a good idea to enhance it. And then by the river in the next slide, the overlook decks could maybe get pergolas and be more of a signature element in those two locations that are connected to the pathways back into the plaza. Moving along, in the arrival court, we're now proposing that in a more ambitious plan, maybe there could be water elements, both at the plaza level, on the arrival court level, and then using the water tower, actually, to envision some sort of a fountain inside that cubicle. And it's kind of a humorous way of imagining the water from the tower actually going down into a fountain on select event days or maybe year-round. So I think in the next few images, you'll see a more refined 3D imagery of what these spaces could look like. Here is the two fountains at work during an event where art projection is on the wall. That back annex to the Lyles Hotel, of course, is very daunting. It's sort of this white box that is actually very useful at night for projecting artworks. And you could even imagine temporary artwork being applied to it, sort of as a gallery wall. And you can see another rendition of that in the next image, where we're actually compressing the perspective in this one. We inserted a pavilion where actually there isn't one in our plan, but it kind of gives you the idea of how these new pavilions could be seating areas during an event, a nighttime event. The next image is more accurate. You see the artist's porches with the shade structures, lighting. This is a dusk. We're being creative with the location of the sun, we realize, but we wanted to sort of create a mood with these images. And in the final image, the steps to the event lawn with the stage and the water fountain and the Artist Village beyond. And this concludes my slideshow, but now your staff is going to play a short video that kind of brings together all of these images in 3D. I don't know if you could hear the music in that video, but I hope you could.
A couple of comments. First of all, great job. Thank you. I want to make council aware of the fact that our Art in Public Places Board, which actually does exist and has existed for about 21 years now, 20, 21 years. I had directed them to work on our master plan, and it's kind of gotten into gear. I would love to have input even from today's meeting because part of that master plan in recognizing what we need to do going forward, that input would be critical. And our meeting is next Tuesday?
Tuesday.
So, you know, any comments there that could be directed to Nicole? But I'm going to be the fly in the ointment here. We're government-light. If anybody isn't looking at some of this and saying, "Oh, my", we have priorities. And you all know I've been involved with arts in this city since pretty much we began. Love it, but some of these things are very costly. The two things that come to mind are interactive sculptures. They cost money to maintain. And as much as people say that they don't, you talk to any city that has them, it's part of their budget. So I would be very concerned about interactive art. Secondly, the Lyles Hotel, I think people on this council have commented over the years and previous councils, the Lyles Hotel is underutilized. I love the idea of that space being utilized. The event, possible event space at the south end, I'm sorry, the north end of the artist cottages is a great idea. Any reason why, Nicole, or General Online, the pergola wasn't put up on top so that you could have performers on the top of the stairs rather than down in the plaza, which is where it was located in the drawings?
I think in this presentation, it was based on artist feedback as well as small performances that we just looked at it being open-air because we didn't see as many performers, or if it would be, it would be more at night. So you wouldn't need the shade, but that's something that, of course, we could add. But it was more trying to open up that area so the artist cottages, people, right now it is cut off, so it would give them the opportunity that people would see the stairs if something wasn't going on, that would, you know, have them going up to the artist cottages. So that's why there wasn't a structure over top of it at this point.
So not a negative, just?
No, not a negative at all.
And then one of the things in our original master plan was the fact that our goal was 18 years ago, that within 10 years, that our art program would be self-sustaining, which it's not. But the idea of enhancing the park and creating a revenue stream for the city that we could take those monies, part or all, and invest that in art elsewhere in the city, I think is a great idea. But I just, I want to caution council to look at some of the things. They're absolutely beautiful, but there was a meter going in my brain when some of this was going, at about $5 million, I started getting a little nervous. So I think we want to prioritize this, too. Thank you.
Jesse?
Yeah, I think great job overall with that. Just some thoughts. I like the gazebo by the river. That's awesome. I think that I like the porch addition on Lyles. Have we thought about what it would look like to do a full wraparound, like old Florida style? And like, you could, instead of just having the one piece of shade, you could actually go all the way around it instead of the little siding things that we have. We could actually, shutters, instead of the shutters, actually just go full wraparound. I just think aesthetically, I don't know if that messes up the historic piece of Lyles or not, but if it doesn't, I just think like that could be additional shade, and it could kind of make the building itself look better. The Good Bread store, I'd love to see that that's going away. I think we need to kind of have a more in-depth discussion on the replacement and exactly kind of how that looks. Not opposed to how it looks, but just kind of like to have discussion on that. And then at some point, we should talk to Baron Collier. There's going to be two to three fire pits in the River Esplanade project area. So incorporating the fire pits into the overall vision could be good because depending on where they're at, you don't want to ignore it. Because what if it is right down by the river? Like, we should cater something to make that part of the plan, if possible. And then last, the water tower fountain art piece was really cool. I do like that. That's all the thoughts I had. And I don't know if you have answers on any of those, but those were just thoughts I...
This is a vision study, so it was just showing you different opportunities that could be there. And that would be another discussion one, if that was something you wanted to move forward with, that we would drill down into what exactly we want. This was just so you could see the different options that we could place there.
Very well. Very good. Very good.
Chris?
Yeah. I want to take this a little bit different direction because we can all get lost, I think, in the specifics of what this plan has and so forth. I think the first thing we need to do is look at this. What DPZ has presented as a planning document, okay? We need to, as a council, I think, formally receive it and put it in our records as a planning document and then provide a policy direction that council supports exploring implementation pathways. And the reason that's important is that we don't want this thing to end up on the shelf and a year from now, we say, you know, what's been accomplished. So we're doing, I would suggest that we accept it as a planning document and that we then provide direction to staff that says, basically, we're looking at how we're going to implement this. Second, we need to think about how we're going to engage the community, how we're going to hold some public workshops and input sessions, and then form a community arts working group with the arts organizations in town, with the Wonder Gardens, which a lot of the Wonder Gardens fits into this, local artists, and so forth. And then we need to also start thinking about partnership development because Nigel's right. There's a lot of money that can be expended in this total effort, but there are people that are stakeholders that have an ability to help fund this, whether it's Arts Benita, whether it's philanthropists, whether it's the Wonder Gardens itself, whatever. We can look at local businesses, the Downtown Business Alliance. Everybody that's involved in downtown has sort of a stake in this whole thing, and we need to take advantage of that and look for ways in which we can come up with private public partnerships that help fund this thing. This is not necessarily just a City of Benita Springs project or a City of Benita Springs funding project on its own. And then I think one of the things we need to do is to ask DPZ, take what they've come up with now and come up with a phasing kind of framework. What of all this that they're looking at now could be implemented quickly and at low cost? The second is, what's medium-long, what's medium-term kinds of projects from what they've presented? And third is, okay, what's the major long-term projects? We're going to need more time to think about the long-term projects, but there's things that we can do fairly quickly out of all this that would beautify downtown and enhance what we're trying to do. I would advocate that we provide an oversight to this whole process, and we rest that oversight either in an ad hoc committee or the Arts in Public Places Committee. Nigel's right. They spent a lot of time working on this. So why not engage that committee in the overall governance associated with trying to move this project forward? And then develop some sort of funding strategy going forward. But the first thing I would do is adopt a motion formally acknowledging the DPZ concept plan and directing staff to look at implementation strategies going forward. So I'll make that motion, that we formally accept DPZ's plan and we direct staff that we're looking for some way forward with respect to implementation strategies.
Chris, would you amend that to include that we get a recommendation from DPZ on phases?
Sure. Well, that's one of the things the implementation strategy we do would be to ask DPZ for a phasing plan. But I think, yeah, that's fine. If you want that specifically in the motion, that's fine.
And then, if possible, Nicole, I'd love to see this presented on Tuesday.
Yep.
Thank you. Read my mind.
Jim?
Yes, in concept, I love it. To Nigel's comment in terms of the meter running in terms of cost, based upon our quality of life initiatives we have going forward now, is something we have to put into the priority list and make sure we figure out what the right way to bring this in because it is needed. That area with some of the things that have been raised do provide a great value to our residents here in town, specifically the addition of some of the public art. I agree with Nigel relative to the interactive art and some of the stuff we see in some major cities. That is expensive and it's hard to maintain. I like the expanded event spaces. I guess my biggest concern is the event space that is south of the plaza. We have put a pathway that is crooked, that kind of chews up space that could be used for larger gatherings. And I guess that from my end is if we truly want to expand the event space available, that we need to figure out how to maximize that space and that acreage that sits in that quote "event space". Trees and crooked pathway do have a tendency to cut into what would be available for larger events. Similarly, the concern about more shade trees and so forth to provide that, love it, but I do want to make sure that when you look at the northern event space... But I do want to make sure that when you look at the northern event space, where it, it shows sage trees going around the south end of that, uh, event space, I just want to make sure that the flow is consistent from the north event space to the plaza on down to the south event space because I think that when you bring in a major event and so forth, we just got to make, provide that continuity. And I know sometimes trees and shade have a tendency to cut off that flow. Um, and I guess the only other thing that's sitting there long-term in my mind is that I don't know what the thoughts were in terms of this quote town hall thing. Was there a capacity type thing that, uh, there were thoughts behind what that might be able to accommodate?
Um, yes. So we used to have a former, uh, community hall on the Banyan Tree parcel that was greatly utilized by the community. We currently do not have a, a community space for people to use, to rent, to use. Um, so that's why the community hall space was, was looked at as a possibility for that location. Uh, we were looking at somewhere around the 150 to 200 people range.
Okay, thank you.
Which was similar in size to the, to the former community hall that we had.
Nigel, did you have another comment or?
Oh, sorry, I almost did not press my button. I did second.
Yeah, Jesse or Jamie, you haven't gone yet?
Yeah, it just, um, that was amazing presentation. I think it, I mean, it looks beautiful and it will look beautiful, but all I see is lots of money also. So, um, I agree partnerships, looking into that. Um, but everything Chris said, I think is great. Um, phases, I mean, I, if I'm correct, I think the Good Bread Store is in our budget already to have it removed. So I would think that could possibly be a phase one to start with. But of course, just, um, you know, looking at that to getting started. Um, but no, overall, I, I think it's, I like the idea of the community building and I mean, having weddings and such there, it, it would be beautiful. So I just think we have to be careful and see where, what the cost is and do phases also.
Thank you. Jesse, you had another comment?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, Good Bread, uh, I think we can do that before phase one because we have the money. So like if we wait for them to do this whole study and then ask them to do phases and then it comes back to us and then they're like, hey, get rid of the Good Bread Store. I think we can do that with a green sheet next meeting if we want to. So I think that'll just be quicker.
Can't make a motion?
I, I don't think I can make that motion now, but I think, okay. And then ironically, the, when she said the old, uh, the old town hall, ironically, the old town hall on the Banyan Tree property is where we had the initial downtown visioning studies a long time ago. So kind of cool thought process of bringing that back. I didn't even get that connection until you said that. Um, and then with Chris's piece on the creating another committee, I'm not, I'm not anti-committee. I think, I would just say let's kick the tires on that and have a larger discussion on that. But only the idea of relinquishing large pieces of time passage to another committee that we then have to quote work with, it just bureaucratically, it seems like it may take longer if we already have our committee set up. And I'm not against another one. I'm just saying, I don't know, I don't know that it will speeden up the process to do that when we can still have input. Any of those players that you're talking about, I think we can do appropriate input with, without necessarily creating another one. Again, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just eyes wide open. We're trying to get rid of committees. I mean, that's just a fact. We've been trying to get rid of them, right? So like adding another one when we're in the process of getting rid of them. If, if there's a way we could work with the art community in a capacity that doesn't create any unnecessary hurdles as far as the time goes, then I'm cool with it. But I just wanted to put that out there as a, as a thought. But yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
Now, I liked what I saw. I think it's very beautiful. Um, also concerned with the cost of what it's all going to be. So I think it's going to be overall a long-term project, but there, I think there's some smaller bites that we can take along the way. Um, one thing I, I was kind of hoping to see in this was uses for the Lyles building. Um, I, I think we really need to figure that out be- before we go too far with it because if we design a lot of things around it, it might not conform with what we ultimately want in it. So.
So we did, we did talk to Javier about that. One of the concerns that they brought up is that the current, um, walls and existing layout of the building is probably, um, maybe not as conducive as it would be to events or other uses or a, um, artist's use in there. That would be a completely more extensive study. And so we wanted to keep the process of the reimagining the space and activating the space moving forward. Um, so, because you would have to possibly remove
Walls.
Walls and structures. That, that was some of the initial intake. So, um, we can do a phase two of the study and that's kind of some direction we wanted you all on, on additional. But I think we were also heard that, um, having a back of house or use for the event, supportive of the events is continued. Staff can be in there or the event users can be in there. It can be used as a catering location. Um, there is still some small meeting space in there as well. What we've run into, the fact is it's not quite large enough for community groups to regularly use. It's good for 10 to 15, 20 people, small groups of Boy Scouts, smaller groups of the downtown alliance at times have utilized it. Um, but it wasn't large enough for the community hall space that you previously had. So we didn't, as a policy, that's a decision of council, whether you wanted to look at a building, but we asked them to kind of give us direction on that space. Um, that was, that is the historic structure because of the functionality of that structure right now. But, uh, if you wanted to move further into recommendations, there would be architectural recommendations that they would have on that.
Okay. Nigel, you had another comment?
Yeah, first I wanted to thank Jesse for his thoughtful comments. Um, we have an Art and Public Places Board. On that Art and Public Places Board, Arts Benita is representative. They have a, their own, in fact, right now it's the executive director. Secondly, there are two artists on the board. So why not keep the board that we have to Jesse's comments? Let them be the responsible voice. They've been to council. People can come to the meetings, they can make presentations, but breaking up into committees, all of a sudden after a while, you've got people running off and we're looking at creating more committees after we've gotten rid of some of the redundancies we already have. So thanks, Jesse. And I'd, I'd like to strongly recommend that we keep that artist, uh, the Art and Public Places Board.
And outside groups can come forward to council.
Absolutely.
Without being under the sun.
And to the Art and Public Places Board.
You know, if, if it's something that we create, then there, there's a lot of rules that go along with it. So it's much better if they meet on their own outside and come forward to us that way. So.
Can we have a vote on my motion?
I'll second it. Are we able to do that?
Um, so, uh, but exactly, it's the motion again?
That we formally, formally accept the DPZ report and that we direct staff to start developing implementation alternatives pathways to, to address many of the things that we've been talking about here.
And phases.
I second.
And, and phases, I think was the.
Yes.
Oh, did you already second?
Okay, so it's a motion.
And Jamie seconded.
I think Nigel already had to.
Oh, did he?
I did.
Any more comments? All right, motion and a second.
Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, uh, moving on to city attorney items.
I just have a real quick request. Um, going over the, the items that we have outstanding. Um, one of the items is the, the electric bike ordinance. And that, that was discussed by the council was designating certain areas, uh, for consideration and non-consideration. If you could, if you could email me directly or email staff directly what areas you'd like to see included in those zones. Because I, I know there was talk about downtown, but other, other areas have come up in discussions just so we could narrow in and get that, that ordinance back to you.
To clarify, is that the pedal-only zones?
Pedal-only zones, yes.
Have you seen any other areas come up with regulations on e-bikes that, I mean, it's?
The only community I know that, that is actually being successful, like I did some research into the ones that were supposedly banning it. Most of them actually have not. Uh, Estero's banned it for years. It's an enforcement issue. The only community I know that's doing a pretty good job is the city of Sanibel. Um, and they have their own police force, plus they have a very, you know, extensive bike network. So I think, I think that's part of how they're, and they don't ban it outright. I believe that they have speed limitations in other areas. So, um, but the direction that you gave was pedal-only in certain parts of downtown, not necessarily all of downtown and then other core areas. So I don't know if you want us to be looking at that from a perspective of the type of sidewalks, the type of areas, or just the neighborhoods in general. Because obviously some sidewalks are bigger than others and that may be a restriction.
Do, do, do we currently regulate and require the use of helmets?
No, required by state law.
Under 16.
Under 16.
Under 16. Okay.
That's still a good idea for everybody.
I think the larger, the larger the scope, probably the better. Because you're saying whether it should be streets or communities, I think just the larger the scope, the better probably. Because if we try to be like, all right, it's just this little, it's going to be, it's going to be very difficult to enforce anyway. But it's going to be even more, even more difficult to enforce if it's just here or just here. I think we got to.
Well, the, the, the benefit of smaller areas is that you can do signage. You know, whereas citywide, it's not going, you know, you're going to have to do a campaign to get people's attention on it. Um, the other, the other question that I don't think we completely resolved was the scooters. You know, they're not.
Yeah, you can't pedal a scooter.
Can't pedal a scooter. I mean, you can push them, but, um, that's another, and segways and other things like that are.
I'll just mention that I think the original intent was to, uh, do this, Jesse, in what the areas that we're trying to enhance as walkable areas and that that's what got it to downtown. So my suggestion is, is we look at those areas that we want to make sure that remain walkable and make sure they stay safe in the process. We limited truck traffic for one thing downtown. Uh, so I think in my thinking, it's logical that we would do something to, uh, you know, ensure safety associated with electric bikes and scooters. So.
I, I would agree. That's, that would probably be the main focus in terms of, for the benefit of the overall community. But from my end, every Thursday going to Rotary at seven o'clock in the morning, uh, the number of folks that are coming down East Terry and crossing, crossing over to Mike's U-Pic. Uh, I literally had a half dozen go straight across before I ever got to Morton Road. And I don't know what, how we need to address that, but someday someone's going to get killed.
Somebody did at East Terry literally two weeks ago and it was one of these bike, it was one of, it was an e-bike hit by a jeep and.
Well, that was, that was the one on, on Imperial and, and East Terry?
Imperial, East Terry, yeah.
Uh, I, I guess from my end, I don't know if that falls within, within the no pedal zone, but it is clearly a safety and concern both to our drivers, folks using the limited pathways as well as to the riders of the e-bike. It's, it's just, it's just a large commuter base there.
East Terry, I a hundred percent agree.
I would just suggest that, that let's focus on downtown and then from, during that process of focusing on downtown, maybe other solutions will, uh, come up that we can apply to other areas. So. Uh, I think we need to go ahead with downtown.
Nigel?
Derek, have we come up with any cities that have had or that have successfully incorporated similar ordinance or plan into, uh, their structure?
So the cities that, that have the most extensive programs also have ready alternatives. So like Miami Beach and other areas where they have large, they've, they have designated zones, designated areas. Those are the cities where this has been a problem longest, but they also accommodate for the use. So as far as cities that, that outright ban it everywhere, no, I haven't found one that's effectively done it in a similar circumstance.
Okay. I think, I think we're good. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, City Manager.
Thank you. Um, we come forward, Lisa, for the presentation, July financial report. Is he working? Good soon-to-be afternoon, um, Lisa Roth. Um, I'm the only thing standing between everyone and lunch, so this is going to be really quick. Um, uh, just wanted to present to you our, our monthly financial statement for July. Um, this includes about eight to nine months of activity, depending on the revenue sources. Um, what you, the first slide that you have before you, which we do show you each time. I know it seems a little boring, but what we need to do with this is just look for trends and it really helps us to make sure we're in line with budgetary amounts and see how we're comparing, comparing from year to year. Each, uh, month, we show you current fiscal year to date as compared to prior fiscal year to date. Again, some of our revenues are very cyclical. We get more in certain months of the year. So this allows us to, um, to account for that. Um, I will say one happy news on this slide are half-cent sales tax. Historically, in the first seven months of the year had been trending about seven percent down. It, it's coming around. So, um, something positive there from an economic standpoint. Um, general fund expenditures, these are generally speaking, our regular recurring operating expenses. Um, as we had budgeted and anticipated, uh, consistent with what we're seeing in the state and around the country, we're continuing to see some inflationary trends here. Um, we'll be preparing, we prepared for that in our next year's budget. Um, restricted revenues, this is the slide where we depict revenues that are restricted for specific uses, such as our building permit fees. You'll hear, um, community development talk about those later. Those are restricted for operation of, and enforcement of code, um, building codes. And then also stormwater, the other things, the biggest mover here, if you will, um, road impact fees. Um, as we talk about, those are impact fees that are, um, assessed when someone comes into community development to do, generally speaking, a new construction permit. Um, so these are sort of, um, dependent on market conditions and when someone goes over there to pull their permit. As you're seeing, we're a little behind this year, um, but this is well in line with what we budgeted. So, um, it seems like last year fiscal year to date was just a little more higher activity there. Um, and our next few slides are cash balances. We like to show you all each month, um, the accumulation of funds or the use of funds. The primary, primarily we show you these because these are your funding for your capital improvement programs and priorities that you have in place. Um, generally speaking, we pay as you go for those. So you will see us accumulating money for those. And when the capital improvement projects actually come to construction and we actually start paying for the construction, um, the, the funds will be drawn down. And this slide is just a continuation of those. These are restricted funds primarily for park impact fees, um, stormwater, building fees, funds reserved for debt. Um, two million of those funds reserved for debt are from our loan from the state of Florida, which is available for us to draw on at any time for operations in, in case of an emergency, any type of emergency to keep our operations going. And then also in there as well, we have the monies where we partnered with Lee County for Old Forty-One Downtown redevelopment. That is fully funded, um, through real estate tax value growth from Lee County's portion. So that is sitting there and that will pay our debt service as we move forward. And that's all that I have for y'all today.
Thank you. Nigel?
Lisa, one question. If you go back to the revenues page, the first one?
Mm-hmm, of course.
Just had a question. Uh, let's see, yeah, right there. Other revenue, that 2.5 million, is 2 million of that the interest-free loan?
I believe, I believe, no, the loan would not be presented here, no sir.
So that what big, what is that?
Last year, it was actually, I believe that's where we received, um, community development. We received some affordable housing funds. That's an anomaly, a developer agreement, um, bonus density. And as a requirement of receiving bonus density, he, um, has, uh, we have about 1.3 million, which is in your budget, rolled forward and designated restricted for use for affordable housing.
But nothing for us to be concerned about?
No, sir, not at all. Thank you for pointing that out.
Any other questions?
Thank y'all very much.
Um, thank you. Next, we have an update on the building permit fee schedule. Jackie Gensen with Community Development.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Just trying to find my presentation. And I do have in the audience, Mr. Dolma here, here as well to help with any questions. So I'll go ahead and, and tee this up. Okay, so at a couple of our previous council meetings, we were asked to bring back building fees for consideration to see if fee adjustments were necessary based on current trends and current, um, elements that are having impact on us providing services. So by Florida statutes, local, local governments may charge reasonable fees to enforce the Florida Building Code. And the revenues that we generate from those fees should generally, um, align with what is reasonable to enforce those costs or for those enforcement costs. Um, in Florida statutes, we are. In Florida statutes, we are also limited, all local governments, in how much of a carryforward balance that a jurisdiction can carry before we have to make some changes. And that limit is based on an average operating budget of the past four fiscal years for that, for the building department. Any excess funds that are generated above that average four-year fiscal operating cost has to be used for technology upgrades, staff training, or we have to rebate those fees. Just to kind of bring it to speed on our current department needs, we have evaluated our fees. They haven't been adjusted in an upward trend since 2008. But, so what we're looking at is we need to ensure that the fees support the operations of the department, any necessary technology upgrades that are needed, and staff training. And why that's important is if you have an operating cost of X and revenues of Y and the revenues are not covering your operating costs, there's a deficit and then it could potentially hit the general, general fund. So what we're looking at is, some of the biggest factors is an ICC valuation data, which is the International Code Council, which is how we base a big bulk of the building permit fees. Also, there is a thought of us adjusting and looking at some of our flat fees where based on the level of effort to actually review a permit and inspect a permit to determine if the fees actually cover the costs. So our key considerations also, as we go ahead and evaluate fees and if they should be changed, is the legislature did pass a bill earlier this year where we are prohibited from increasing fees if there's a situation where an emergency declaration is declared for up to 180 days. So for instance, if we get a storm and an emergency declaration is issued, then we cannot raise building inspection or permit fees for 180 days. So that's why we're, we're really wanting to go ahead and evaluate that in the event we do get a storm to look at those fees. So timely consideration is definitely a factor. And again, the building department still has to function regardless if we have a storm or not and if waivers are requested to cover those fees. And two, we want to make sure that we're monitoring those building funds to make sure that the balance is sustainable to cover the cost around the department. And what I think is important too, is to understand the full cost recovery model of a building permit. So I thought we would just kind of explain the life of a permit. Because again, the permit fees that we generate to enforce the building code needs to cover all direct and indirect costs. So a permit lifestyle, cycle, cycle is a permit comes in, buyer permit technician is entered into the system, is distributed to review entities such as the building department, zoning department, environmental, fire, sometimes BSU. So there is that coordination. You actually have the plan review itself, especially those different disciplines that the building department actually is in charge of doing. So there's structural review, there's mechanical review, there's plumbing review, gas. So there's a variety of different plan reviews that the building department actually performs. Again, that agency coordination is very important. For example, if a commercial building permit comes in and it's a restaurant, we need to make sure that they've gone through Benita Springs Utilities properly to do their permits. So again, a lot of coordination that the building department and their plan review capacity ensures. Then once the permit's ready for issuance, we issue the permit. So again, that takes staff resources, you have software and permit technicians that do that. Then you have the inspection process. So some permits have limited inspections, some have a lot of inspections. So again, it varies by permit. And then you have the permit closure process. And all through that, out that process, you have the building department team that's available to answer questions. We have customer service needs. So our permit technicians answer a lot of questions, just in general on the process and is my inspection scheduled, just a lot of different things that go into supporting the administration of the building department. Some local conditions. So we are not the only jurisdiction evaluating if our fees are appropriate. Most recently, the city of Fort Myers retained a consultant to do a very thorough study and they updated their fees in August of this year. They updated their value-based fees using the most current ICC table that was available at that time to update their fees. They also adjusted their flat fees. And then most recently, last month, the Village of Estero also updated their fees. They too are using the most current 2025 ICC data table for their value-based fees and they too have also increased their flat fees. So just some items for your consideration, based on our current needs as a department and what we're seeing in other jurisdictions of late, is there should be consideration to update the ICC table. The current table that we use to adjust and use our current fee schedule is from 2008. It's quite outdated. So that's over 17 years. And as you can imagine, with inflation and, and construction costs, those figures have changed. So, so it would be appropriate to consider if that is council's pleasure to update that table. Also, to update our existing flat fees, there's some flat fees and I'll go into detail on a future slide, to make sure that the level of effort that it goes into review a permit and inspect a permit is adequately being covered if we're doing a cost recovery model. Also, we have some processes where we believe that a fee may be appropriate to go ahead and add to the fee schedule. For instance, temporary certificates of occupancy. That does take a lot of time and coordination with the building official and other agencies to make sure a building is safe and secure and coordinating with other departments. So we have been issuing a lot of temporary certificates of occupancy and it seems appropriate that that might be a fee to consider moving forward. This table right here, I'm gonna try this technology here. So, so this slide right here is meant to show you for, for the next fiscal year, we coordinated with finance and estimated our projections revenue for next year. So that, what this slide does is it shows you based on next fiscal year, if we do no fee adjustments, what we expect to see. So we, we estimated a revenue projection about 2.36 million coming in, the operating budget. So that is the contract to run the building department. So that's currently at three point, just under 3.1 million. So you can see with the projected revenues coming in even being conservative. So let's say that, you know, people aren't pulling permits, the market's not moving too much. So we have a conservative estimate and then we have an optimistic, hoping that the economy's gonna rebound a little bit with interest rates coming back down. There is a deficit that we're showing in terms of revenues coming in to cover the contract to run the building department. So that is one slide that we've worked with our IT data analyst who is very much into the numbers with our intergov permitting system and that's just a projection and a guesstimate that we have found. Now, using this year's data, so actual revenue that has come in and if council were to entertain fee adjustments to again elaborate on that cost recovery model, we have the table here that then shows, again, the operating budget for this year is, is different because of different contract year. So the building department this year is 2.9 million, but if fees were to be increased in this situation here where fees did not change at all, you could see that the revenue coming in is 2.45, just under. But if fee adjustments were considered and they were to be implemented, you can see that there is a positive gain in building the building fund balance. So you'll cover the cost of running that department. So this slide here goes into a sample fee adjustment using our valuation-based comparison. And what we did is, we wanted to share with you based on what Estero just adopted and what Fort Myers adopted and based on the current Benita fees and a sample of what could be considered for adjustments where we land. How are we competitive with our jurisdictions to the north? And you can see we're actually still quite competitive in terms of providing that service. So single family, it's one of our most popular permits that's pulled, so you can see that impact. But again, very competitive with our neighbors. Commercial building, this is another popular example. And again, this is all based on type of construction, based on this ICC table. And you can see here the Benita current rates, an ICC table update of 2025, a sample projection of what that could look like and then the Estero and Fort Myers fees. And we're still rather competitive. So how did we come to this consideration for you today? So again, we have a very tech-savvy team member that analyzed a lot of our permits that come in to see how many inspections we do, how many plan reviews we do per permit in order to identify, are we really covering our costs to provide this service? And then he went ahead and assumed a cost per inspection and a cost per plan review based on the current inspection fees to go ahead and estimate those completions and to determine if we have any shortfalls. And that's where on this table, we're showing the permits applied, permits finalized, our average inspection per that permit type, the average review per that permit type, how much that costs to actually provide that service, the fees that are actually paid and the deficit that is, that we foresee based on those assumptions. And then the sample increase is an example of, based on what we're seeing as a deficit in this column here, what would be a recommendation to cover those costs? We have the sample increase in the final column. The one distinction that you'll see here is the accessory detached garage. There is a recommendation or thought process to go ahead and change that to a value-based fee. And that is because detached garages are quite extensive in terms of what they entail. You have slabs, you have walls, you have roof structures. So there is multiple different plan reviews that go into that permit. There are multiple different inspections that go into that permit. So the thought would be to bring that into a value-based fee versus a flat fee that is similar to what the city of Fort Myers does. So again, not out of line. But these are just some areas where when we do the data and we project those costs, there are some areas where we believe that we are not covering costs adequately. And then if we go ahead and cover our costs, where do we line up with those other jurisdictions to the north of us? And for the most part, we're quite competitive and we're still actually very much below some other jurisdictions and what we believe is appropriate to cover the cost to run the, the department for intake, review and inspection and closeout. So our request today is to receive direction from the council based on this presentation and I do have John in the audience as well, is we would like some direction to see, is it appropriate to go ahead and update the ICC valuation table to the most current data set that's available? ICC does update their tables twice a year. So right now, we would recommend either February or there is an August table that would be available to use to bring our costs in line. And again, Estero just did this and so did City of Fort Myers. Also, consideration to adjusting those flat fees where we don't believe that the costs are being covered. And then the idea to go ahead and create a, a fee for those services that are not being covered currently right now, such as the temporary certificate, certificates of occupancy. And then what we would recommend is every year at time of budget, when we provide finance our projected revenues, we then look at the building fund balance with finance, the cost of providing the services for the building department in the future year and to see if adjustments to the fee schedule are warranted and do that on an annual basis. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, John and I are here to answer.
Jim?
Yes, first of all, thank you, John and Jackie and your staff, great job. This helps a lot to answer a lot of my questions that I had. To clarify some of the gaps that we had, Jackie. When you identified the gaps we had today, was that both hard dollar operating expense tied to an activity plus the overhead that's allowed within the statute?
So it's tied to, the way when we did this here, the assumption was purely the level of effort for the plan review in itself, the average reuse. So we can go into our system and see how many times a permit type has been reviewed and then we can go into the system and see how many times an inspection has been called, failed, passed, to see the, an average level of effort. So to the best of our ability, we made those assumptions to see where we're falling short.
I, I guess specifically is that the statute, if I understood correctly in your presentation, is that it does allow for some of your administrative?
Yes, some of our indirect costs.
Training and, and your?
Correct, for the building department, that is correct.
Okay, so that is covered in, in these numbers then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Nigel?
Jackie, one question, the 180-day moratorium on fee increases, does that start, the clock start at the event date or at the end of the state of emergency?
It starts when the declaration is declared.
Okay, so the event date more or less. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I mean, obviously, nobody likes to raise taxes or fees, but in this case, I think it's long overdue. Because we are talking about the actual user paying for what needs to be done versus if we don't do this, then it's being passed along to all the taxpayers of Benita, so. I usually don't like to raise taxes, but, or fees, but I think this is something we need to do, so.
Aren't we still gonna be on the lowest end of the scale?
For the most part, there are some fees, and like in the example I showed you, there's like a couple of fees where we might just be a little bit more than like City of Fort Myers has a couple of fees, but for the most part, we're, we're lower or right in line.
What about Fort Myers Beach, Cape Coral, or what?
I have not, we have not looked at those because they have not recently changed their fee schedules. I don't know if they are, I know City of Cape Coral is definitely doing an impact fee to mobility fee, but they are not, as far as I know, and our building official, he does attend monthly meetings with other building officials and I am not aware of them updating their fees as of yet.
But they might not be that far behind?
Right, correct, and, and I'm happy to bring that back to you guys to see where we line up with them.
Love to see Collier on that too.
Jimmy, you had another comment?
Yeah, I think there's two questions. And I guess this is Derek, when is the earliest we could consider changing these?
I believe we can do it now.
Yeah, Estero just did it last month and?
I didn't know.
There's no, there's no, we're under no probation period right now.
Yeah, it'd be a resolution, so it's one here.
And specifically for discussion purposes, we have had no modification to these rates since 2008. Is that correct?
We've, so when we had a, a surplus that was larger than statute allows, we did do some fee reductions to go ahead and bring that into line. So from that standpoint, the, the biggest factor is with our, the permits that are value-based, those fees have not been changed since 2009 and it uses a 2008 table. And that table is based on construction types and construction costs. So it is not representative of today's?
There's, there's another thing, I think, you know, one of the things to consider is that no matter, I mean, we're, we're highlighting the neighboring jurisdictions for informative purposes, but the reality is that every community is gonna be apples to oranges comparisons because your budget's the way you're set up, whether you're, you're, you're saving money in your capital plan for new building, all that affects everybody, what they pay their people. One of the things that's important about updating the ICC valuations is that the, with new legislation, we, we cannot ask anymore for the estimated value of the improvements when the contracts come in to use those as a basis for calculating the fees. And so we have to have something independent to do that from. So it used to be that, you know, someone came in and despite the fact that they're, they may be paying their contractor $50,000 for a certain improvement, the contractor would write $20,000 to get a lower fee on the permit fee and we're not even allowed to ask them for the contract anymore. So updating the ICC figures does say, alright, well, this is the prevailing, here's a study that says what the prevailing costs of these things are so that we can calculate the accurate fee.
And, and I think if we look at taking a step to go ahead and correct the deficit, I mean, if we're looking at anywhere of a gap from a half million to $800,000 a year in terms of covering our nut, I, I just think that it's worth the evaluation now. Based upon the reluctance and tendency not to increase fees every year, maybe I'd go do this review once every two years or something like that versus annually, so just proof of thought.
And if we get a, if we have a storm this year, we won't be able to implement this later.
Do we need a motion to move forward with this?
I think a motion for direction to staff to bring back the appropriate mechanism resolution. I did want to reiterate too, one of the reasons it was not reviewed again in, as far as since the time? I did want to reiterate too, one of the reasons it was not reviewed again in, as far as the timeframe is there was a surplus for many, many years. And under Florida statute, you're required to reduce that surplus um, per the statute. So um, finance was reviewing that each year and looking at that lockbox of funds. And, and we worked with community development on how you could utilize that. Some of it actually went to code enforcement, how we could spend down those, um, that, that lockbox appropriately within the statute. So now is the, now we're seeing that, uh, the trend is showing that, that, that those fees have, have created this new.
And, and the annual review might be good because if we are getting a surplus again, we can make adjustments to help bring it down annually. Instead of waiting until it got way too big and have to go drastic.
I think that we would be of the mind that the review is only that, a review. It does not, it, it does not require fluctuated increase in those fees. But it also could absolutely right, uh, tend to show a, a fee reduction as well if necessary.
I don't think we want to subsidize half a million dollars a year, nor do we want to penalize our citizens. So bottom line is doing the review. I would ask if you could incorporate a couple more cities that would be appropriate. I don't, I don't think Fort Myers Beach, John, would be appropriate, what it, but what about what uh, North Fort Myers and what Cape Coral do? So that we've got a frame of reference.
Sure, that's not a problem.
And, and just so everybody knows, this fee that's presented today is what we feel is appropriate for today. The reason why there's a recommendation for a regular review is basically what you've all outlined. Initially, uh, we were building thirty to fifty single family permits a month. Uh, that was generally what we had done, track homes out, out east, development patterns have changed. And so this presentation reflects that current change. Things could change again in a year, they could change again in three years, I don't know. Uh, but we can take a look at it annually, just make sure that we're still on track. If there is something that shows a change in development patterns, we can always bring it back to you for consideration. If not, you know, this should hold at least for the current period. And we can bring back some, some comparative fees, especially those in, in Collier County, City of Naples, Collier County. Unincorporated Lee County and, and Cape Coral if you wish.
Is there a motion to bring this back, what we need to do and also more comparative?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
James, one second. Roll call, this is for this to come back, this is.
Yes.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz. Deputy Mayor Purdon.
For now.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, I just have a couple of quick updates. Um, I, I've given a briefing to the mayor, but we'll continue on. Um, we have been notified by DEP. Um, the way they were going to be providing the legislative appropriation was through a grant program. For the work to happen post uh, the appropriation. Um, Representative Botana is fully aware of that. Will be requesting a letter on both, Representative Botana's letterhead to the head of the DEP. Uh, to request that retroactive payment of the two point five. So it doesn't fit into their normal uh, protocol, but they're working with us on a system to fund that. Um, we'll keep you apprised, and if there's any required letter from, um, from the council. I would ask that you authorize the mayor to sign those and we would provide you a copy should we need additional information. On that, just for the receiving or working with the FDEP on that two point five million. For the beach re-nourishment, this is the South Beach Re-Nourishment Project. I don't need a motion, I just want to understand that we, we have direction to do so. Um, additionally, um, we will be submitting on October fifteenth. Uh, the request for the mayor to speak um, at the Lee County delegation meeting. Um, which we'll send out, uh, we'll be using the actual legislative priority list that you've already provided. We've additionally had a meeting with Senator Martin's office. And walked through each of the legislative requests and the, the body of the policy of the council as well. Um, and then we'll send out the meeting date of, of, of that legislative delegation meeting, it's October twenty eighth at nine AM. Um, and then last, um, Aaron Dever with Senator Rick Scott's office. Um, had requested if staff could coordinate with Senator Scott's staff to have open office hours at City Hall. For a couple hours, um, every couple of months or so. Um, they would be coordinating with Capitol Police on that, and we would be coordinating with the Lee County Sheriff's Office. Uh, we would be able to utilize room one eighteen, if it's the pleasure of council, it's a governmental use. Um, we could coordinate with, with their office on providing that service to residents.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you. Uh, mayor and council member reports. Jim?
I just found out we had um, really good news, um, reported on the battalion chief. He made a lot of great progress over this past weekend. All the tubes have been removed and this morning he actually was able to get up with the help of PT and was able to walk. Um, take a half a lap with just a few um, breaks, so pretty amazing. He has another um, surgery scheduled Thursday, and then after that, um, they're hoping within a week or so. He goes to the rehabilitation center. Chief DeWitt said this is just an estimate, but with all prayers and hopes that he's home by Thanksgiving, so. Yes, yeah, yeah, so it's pretty ama- pretty amazing, to be honest, so keep the prayers coming.
Jesse?
Uh, yeah, just two things real quick. Um, in my pursuit for, you know, relentless uh, efficiency, I was thinking after our last uh, zoning meeting, not today's. You know, there's, if we were to consider going from four minutes to three minutes for public comment. Because we get to these zoning meetings and then we have, you know, three members of the same family who go for four minutes apiece. We're twelve minutes into the first presentation, we still got twenty people in the crowd. And then you have all these other people who are waiting for items behind them that never, that half of them get up and leave because they're sick of it. So I'm wondering if there is a process or procedure for that, or if there's any support for that. But I think for a, just a fairness and timing standpoint, okay, so, uh, thank you, Michael. Uh, Lee County Border Commissioners, City of Cape Coral, Fort Myers Beach. Uh, Town Council, Village of Astero, City of Sandoval, City of Naples are all at three minutes. So, that said, we are, you know, kind of like we're trying to get the fees getting in line with our partners. Uh, I think going from four minutes to three minutes would make our meetings uh, a little more bearable for the general public. Uh, from the public comment side of it, so. I don't know what would need to be done, if that needs to be a formal motion, or if, if there is any visceral reaction to that now, you know, go ahead, let me know. But um, or if there's a general support for that, you know. Arlene, what would be the process for that if we wanted to do that?
We would, I think it's in the administrative code, so you'd have to direct staff to bring back an amendment to the administrative code.
Okay, could, could we do, does anybody have an opposition to me asking staff to do that?
No.
Okay, so if staff could do that, that'd be great. And then just uh, along the same lines, uh, we talked about the intersection at East Terry and Imperial, which. Uh, my wife lovingly calls the longest light in America. I wonder if there is, well, and I, I know that there is, but I don't know procedurally how we get there. And maybe the tech committee, Chris's tech committee might be the ones to look into this, but apparently there is. The possibility of in time, AI rolling into the stoplight utilization uh, modeling. So like, it's tech similar to, I guess, how you use ways or maps on your phone. But essentially it's supposed to make the lights uh, more efficient than they currently are. And AI is utilized to make that transformation happen. How that whole works, who it, who, who runs that, any of that, I don't know. That's, we do have a tech committee, so I don't, I'm, I'm not trying to throw it on Chris, but hypothetically, if there's any uh, thought there. I, I'd love to hear about it because these lights are, some of them are just very long and unbearable. The roundabout that I now do like at Old Forty One, that I wasn't sure was going to be a good idea, works really well. But now you go to Imperial and uh, East Terry and it's the same, it's the same thing, it just moved down a block. So it's very, you know, and that can't be the only one, but that's the one that comes to mind. Cause I, I see people stuck there for two or three lights like pretty much every day. Um, so I don't know, if there's a way to look at these companies that roll AI into the, the stoplight stuff, then that would be something cool. Yes?
I, just, those, all the signals uh, within the city are managed by Lee County Traffic Signals. So really, you know, we can ask them to, to look at that technology, we've had those discussions before, but. They, they maintain the entire network, they have kind of a, an adaptive signal management right now anyway. There are some issues with AI, so I don't know that they would be leaping towards that, but that, that's really who maintains them.
It's Lee County, not us, okay, so, okay.
And, and we do have improvements coming to that intersection that.
Yes, I was gonna say, I thought we were gonna improve that intersection.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that too, there, there's an additional turn lane. If you're heading westbound on East Terry Street, uh, with the East Terry Street Drainage Project. There is an additional southbound turn lane that's going to be cut in that may help with some of what you're seeing.
I think that's good, I mean, it's just, it feels like traffic counters are antiquated. Nowadays compared to some of the tech that we have out there, so. But, you know, if it's on the county, I think there's, you know, maybe we can at some point have a discussion with them. I'm just trying to get these intersections moving, cause it's a, it is, you know, off season, you're still having buildups like that.
But they've got something now, I mean, some of those that are driving around late at night because we can. Um, you notice you pull up to a traffic light and within five seconds it changes. So they've got something already out there that, but it seems to be the main roads to do that.
I don't know, I, you know.
You don't drive around.
Government light, I, I, we, we let them manage them.
It, it all changes time of day, you know, they have different patterns for the lights and.
But I mean, you can tell it, it reacts to a vehicle being at.
Yeah.
The light, so there's gotta be something, Jess.
There, there definitely is. Chris?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, the Wonder Garden, you may know something about the Flamingo Night House Project. There was money that was provided to the Wonder Gardens uh, to provide a shelter for the flamingos at night. Uh, to keep out the possibility of predators getting after them. Uh, the flamingos that we have at the Wonder Gardens were actually uh, born in the sixties. And so they're in their sixty year category. Uh, and being elderly flamingos, they don't.
That's fitting.
Yeah, they don't necessarily escape predators as quick as they used to. Uh, I, I can say the same. And uh, anyway, I just thought it'd be nice to know that there is a shelter being to be uh, built for them.
Chris, I interrupted, they'll be forthcoming and approved, so I just, so you know that they, there was outreach to staff to have an initial preliminary view. Um, it does need to continue to go through the permitting process. But um, and then the inter, the final approval, depending on the dollar value, comes back to council. But we did, we, it, there has been a submitter to staff to begin review.
So let's take care of the flamingos. Uh, anyway, uh, I don't know if anybody else that was contacted by Representative Botana. But he contacted me uh, about wanting us to reach out uh, to the county. For a memorandum of understanding for beautification of Benita Beach Road uh, east, I mean, west of uh, Forty One. So I, I said I would bring this up uh, in my comments and maybe we can. Uh, start thinking about what we want to do in connection with the quadrant plan, building the road around the public shopping center. I, I agree that, that, you know, there could be some improvement in the way that uh, Benita Beach Road looks out. Towards uh, towards the Gulf. I mean, it is a major thoroughfare with respect to people getting off I seventy five, it's the only direct access to the Gulf. I think we could find some ways to make it look better, working with the county on that project. The uh, ADU for people that are watching, uh, just to know that Jackie is uh, working on the associated dwelling unit workshop. We, I think there's plans to have one-on-one meetings with council and then we'll put together some sort of a workshop for the public. And uh, there's been some, uh, there's been one preliminary uh, meeting with respect to the animal care facility. One of the things we got to wrestle with is the application of uh, the architectural standards in the special district we call downtown. Uh, and the balancing of those architectural plans with public benefit associated with the bear care or animals. And how that relates is that if we apply all those architectural standards, the cost goes up tremendously. Uh, but there is a offsetting public benefit if you think about the fact that we are caretakers of the animals and the benefit. That we, the public come, uh, gets from the, the proper care of the animals. So, you know, there's a, there's a balancing that we have to do as a council with respect to policy. So anyway, more on that later, but that's what I wanted to talk about.
Thank you, Chris, Nigel?
Um, yeah, just for disclosure purposes, I talked to Adam as well on Sunday, same thing. And he, it wasn't a hard ask, but it was, would we consider? And seems reasonable, and yeah, it would look nice if Benita Beach Road, actually from I seventy five to the beach would look better. But with what they're going to do with the intersection, I reminded him, spending any money from I seventy five to Old Forty One right now. It'd be kind of just throwing good money after bad. But we'll see what happens there. Um, and we have our project at the corner, yes, that's a priority. Didn't forget you, Jesse. Um, I'm surprised, but we had the uh, our Public Places Board voted to uh. Look at a mural on the Benita Beach uh, and Tennis Club Buildings. And we thought they'd be all excited about it, their board was, their members were not. They basically have no interest, so there will not be for the present, a mural on uh, Benita Beach. Benita Beach and Tennis Club Buildings, which are right at the intersection of Old Hickory and uh, Benita Beach Road.
The residents weren't interested or?
No. And costs no money to them, they just weren't interested, so that's the report there. We'll look for another site for a large mural. Um, Veterans Day coming up um, in November.
Sorry, real quick, was there people who didn't want it, or there was just no interest period?
Literally, they had their board meeting and uh, the president of the board who was excited about it said there was very little interest by the board. And absolutely no interest by the residents. And they actually have to vote, they have to have a majority vote to do something like that because it's a structural change.
Even if it's free, they.
I, Jesse, I was as surprised as anybody. Oh, and just for those, the folks, I have several calls still. The large heart that we're installing in the public area out in Midtown is not going to be called Heart of Benita. That was the artist name for it, he has renamed it, it will be Loving Benita. So Heart of Benita will remain to be used sometime in the downtown in the future. Everybody be happy.
Yay.
Thank you. Jim?
Originally had nothing until both Chris and, and Nigel brought up their discussions with Representative Botana. I would ask that near discussions with Infusion remind him that Benita Beach Road does go out to another six to seven thousand doors west of I seventy five. And there's a lot of desire for improving the medians and entranceway along that way. So uh, please in consideration going forward, please remind him of that discussion that he's had before.
East side.
You're on the other side of the trap.
Go to Cal, Collier County.
The uh, we have October seventh coming up, um, just uh, everybody keep their uh, prayers for Israel and everything they went through a couple of years ago. And, you know, still have a conflict going on over there and, and a lot of people, no, quite a few hostages still not at home with their families yet. Um, and also the um, president declared October fourteenth, um, National Day Remembrance for Charlie Kirk. Um, and, and of course also keep the battalion chief in your prayers, so, thank you. Um, and then our next council meeting is uh, been changed to five thirty instead of a morning meeting on October fifteenth. It'll be five thirty in the evening, so, alright.
Yeah, I did want to ask one, we'll be coming for the next meeting with a formal request, but in advance notice is we wanted to begin the um, CIP workshops again. So we may be asking to move the November nineteenth meeting to five thirty PM if we are able to provide a workshop prior to that. So, but we have more at the next meeting.
Alright, um, public comment, I think we have.
We have two registered speakers, Marlene Rodak, and she'll be followed by Alexander Grant.
Hi, thank you for your service. I'm Marlene Rodak. Uh, today I'm talking on behalf of the Coca-Loba and Naples Chapters of the Florida Native Plant Society. And I wanted to talk about the important upland plant areas um, that are remaining in the Benita Springs area. The high dry scrub communities are highly desired by developers. Because the developers don't need to bring in as much soil when they build, so this saves them money. Um, the mitigation costs are much lower uh, for developing uplands than for wetland communities. Or for wetland credits. As a result, these areas are becoming increasingly rare. We can gauge the scarcity of these lands by the number of remaining gopher tortoises. Uh, the, the gopher. The gopher tortoises are a keystone species, because the burrows are so important to the other 300, up to 350 other species that live in them. So by allowing the tortoises to be relocated, we lose the habitat and the ecological benefits they've created. Also, the lack of relocation sites means that now they're sent to central or north Florida, where they suddenly experience frost and freezing weather, and it's my understanding that the mortality rate is 10%, which is not a sustainable number. Now, I understand that you're proposing to build soccer fields near the dog park on Terry. There are about eight acres of varying quality of scrub that you already own. Lightner Creek flows through the property, there are areas of heavy invasives, but there are also areas of intact, rare, endangered, or high-value plants, and there are also gopher tortoises on that land. This parcel is comparable to the 10-acre parcel that the Village of Estero purchased for 1.2 million three years ago, that it has the north branch of the Estero River running through that property. Since that purchase, the invasive species have been removed and the plants and animals are rebounding. The U.S. Department of Agriculture and the Florida Legislature have provided funding to that property to the tune of over 2.5 million. Why? Preventing development of things like soccer fields prevents the excess fertilizers and chemicals from running off into the Estero River or Lightner Creek. The conservation of the land is worthwhile, as well as the ability of the land to clean stormwater and prevent flooding. Soccer fields require excessive chemicals that will run off and leach into the waterway. Soccer fields here will be expensive after buying wetland credits and upland mitigation credits. Benita Springs is running very low on equivalent habitat like this area, and there are better locations for these soccer fields, which include Direct Center, and they will be much less expensive and much more popular. This is truly the worst possible scenario for this parcel. Alternatively, you could remove the invasives and create a beautiful passive preserve where the residents can enjoy experiencing this rare sight. They will enjoy the health benefits and the peaceful tranquility of an amazing place right in the center of Benita.
Thank you.
What timing, thank you.
Alexander Grant?
Yes. Infrastructure is extremely important, right? Public safety is extremely important, so the two things are tied together, and passenger rail service, Amtrak, is the answer to both. And that is important. If you want to bring extra money into the downtown area, you need to have passenger train service daily here, it'll pay for itself. Don't worry about the people riding it, there'll be plenty of people to do that. Don't forget, we have 60,000 permanent residents right now, and growing more. We have nearly a million people in Collier County, nearly a million in Lee County, and what, we have nearly 1% of the population of the United States, south of the Manatee River, located in Lee, Collier, Charlotte, the Soto Counties, and South Sarasota Counties. Don't worry, with two or, with nearly 3 million people here, there'll be plenty of people to ride the train. So remember that, and it won't hurt anybody's bottom line with businesses in Old 41. This is a shot in the financial arm for this area. You can't lose any money on that, you can only gain money on it. That, and you will at least benefit the people in case of a hurricane here trying to evacuate on crowded Interstate 75. I mean, that area in Tampa Bay area is a sitting disaster for the next Ian coming up. And what do you think is going to happen there? Nobody is going to be able to evacuate, but we've got that rail track all the way going to central Florida as a possible evacuation center. Public safety is extremely important, as well as infrastructure. Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, motion to adjourn.